Anytime.
All right, we're recording. Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the Finance Committee meeting to order nine AM on May twenty six, two thousand and twenty-two. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one extended by chapter twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting, they do so via Zoom or by telephone, no in-person attendance and members of the public has been permitted, but every effort is being made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding in real time via technological means. I'm going to proceed to go through the committee list again alphabetically by last name and make sure that each member of the committee can signify that they can hear. And by their response, we know we can hear them to assure their participation. So let's start with Lynn.
Present.
Bob?
Present.
Matt, we said is not present and oh, Matt is here now. Matt? Matt, can you hear us?
Andy, I'm here. I'm sorry. Give me one second.
Okay, that's okay. You got it. Bernie?
I'm here.
Michelle?
Everybody.
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
And Alicia?
Here.
Okay, so all members of the committee are present and all have signified that they've been able to hear and we've heard their response. So.
I want to make sure that Anna can hear us even though we don't have a quorum.
Good morning.
You know, keep an eye out if we get any additional attendance from members of the council and need to call it as a council meeting in addition. The agenda today is to complete the presentations of departments and when we, we will, that is the first agenda item to discuss. And then there were some general questions who were posed by one member of the council that Sean is going to see if he can tell us what they were and address them to the best that he can. And the, we will build public comment into the agenda somewhere along the way, probably around that point. And then we're going to conclude by seeing if there are any definite requests by two members of the committee for items for consideration on Monday. We will start Monday by making that possibility or Tuesday, rather, Tuesday's meeting, thirty-first. We will go back to do that again on Tuesday, but to the extent that we can identify issues today, that would be helpful for preparation purposes. Then we have one more member of the council who's joined us. Jennifer, do you want to make?
Yes, Jennifer, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. With Jennifer's arrival, I want to call the town council to order for the committee of the whole meeting in relationship to the Finance Committee meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, and having reviewed the agenda, are there any questions about the agenda itself? And I'm aware, Michelle, that you have questions about future agenda placement issues that will be when we get back to setting the agenda for next week and after we will get back to that, but I just wanted to acknowledge it. So turning it to Sean because you have an order established that you you've arranged with our staff and I'll let you take, take the lead there.
Thanks, Andy. So Jeremiah LaPlante, our facility manager is here. He's gonna lead us through the sort of general government facility section and also the police facilities. And for those who are following in the budget document, the general facility starts on page one oh six, the snapshot of the department. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeremiah.
Where are you, Jeremiah? Yes, so as Sean said, that I'm going to be discussing general government and APD budget. And I think a good news is, is not a lot has changed with our, our operational budget for those two, two areas. And this comes with our, our look to the future, with expanding and welcoming the addition to the North Amherst Library. Finance and I are following some trends, particularly in the utilities. At APD, we have seen a decrease in our electric bill, and I could say that that's safely say that that's probably attributed to some of the upgrades that we've, we've done through the green communities program. Over at Bangs Community Center, we've seen a fairly sharp increase in our water usage. But I think this is, even though it sounds negative, I really believe that it is a positive. This is, this results from the increase in programming and the Musanti Center, Health Center becoming much more active. This, this increase comes at a time where we are really seeing the Bangs Community Center sort of transition from a community center to more of a, a social service center. We have the senior center, the health center, public health. And eventually, we're going to see the crest program. So we, we see this transition happening. So yes, we are, we are seeing an increase in the utilities, but it really is a positive. The Bangs Community Center is brightening up and we have all these wonderful programs there. Moving on to some of projects that we have, we're closing out FY twenty-two. We had a bunch of projects that we completed or in, in, were working on. Over at the North Fire Station, we upgraded all of the garage bay doors, making it much more weather tight, increasing our efficiencies. We're expanding the building access controls across five different buildings. And this allows for greater flexibility and security in our municipal buildings. We're working on repointing a bunch of town hall. This will help with our grant, our granite fascias. We have a Bangs accessibility improvement, and this is through our MOD grant that we were awarded. So the whole front section of Bangs is being reworked to make it more accessible and to clean up some of the findings that we had through that accessibility report. And we're developing, developing and renovating the third floor of Bangs for the crest program, which is really exciting to welcome them into the building. Looking towards FY twenty-three, that'll look like HVAC at Munson, HVAC in North Amherst. And one of the biggest projects that we're focusing on is replacing the chiller over at the police department. That, that'll be one of our, our big focuses. All of these will be done through our in-house and, and trying to capture as, as much funding as we can through MathSays. All this, all, all this year, MathSays is offering wonderful rebates for upgrading and eliminating fossil fuels. So we, we really need to do, do our best to, to utilize those and, and sort of get back some of this, this money. So that's, that's a quick snapshot of, of the budget and all the projects. Is there any questions for me?
Andy, there were some questions sent in that maybe I, Jeremiah, I don't know if you have that in front of you, but I can read them if you don't.
Yes.
Okay, who is?
I don't have them in front of me.
Who is the one who said?
Michelle sent them in. Michelle sent them in.
Okay, thank you.
So the first one, Jeremiah, is there a plan to update the facilities inventory report?
Yes. Yes, there, there isn't a, a plan to update that. This, this year, the focus is twelve, twelve buildings. So there's, I believe, sixty or sixty-three buildings in total on that report. So just sort of picking away at it. I have twelve that are in works now and each year, each year I will build, build upon that. Some of them will go a lot quicker than others. So the twelve I have now, I would have to say are probably some of the bigger ones, so.
Good. How do you expect deferred maintenance of, how do you expect the deferred maintenance of buildings? How will that impact the budget in coming years?
Well, I, I think if we keep focusing on some of these larger projects and getting some of those taken care of, then this, that I would imagine or anticipate some of these deferred, these deferred projects, capital projects to sort of less. So I know that right now, our, our capital budget is quite large. And as we move on, you see that decreasing and that, that is just really a result of prioritizing some of these big projects and making sure that we get them taken care of.
And just adding to that, not everyone hears on JCPC, so we do have a line item that we've sort of been increasing a little bit each year. That's sort of general facility maintenance and us to tackle these deferred maintenance projects as they come up. And so Jeremiah has done a good job of sort of listing out what's on his radar. Are there general ideas about meeting our climate goals within facilities? So Jeremiah, I know you, you think about that a lot.
I, I do, I do. I'm, I'm always thinking about that with any of the projects that, that I'm, I'm trying to tackle. I have Stephanie right beside me and she is, she is my best resource. Her and I collaborate on a lot of these. I ask her, you know, if there are any things that I can do to help us achieve these goals. It, it really is on my mind. So I, I just work with all these, all the different individuals to ensure that I am, is, I, we really do need to push. We need, we need to push as far as we can with every project. So it is important.
So Andy, there's a number of hands raised. We have one more facilities question, but probably go to the questions first.
Okay, and as always, recognize any questions from members of the council and members in the Finance Committee in order to hands up here. Anna?
Yeah, mine's actually a, a quick comment. Thank you, Jeremiah. That's really helpful. To Michelle's two questions. One of the things that I'm working on with the Chair of ECAC as their liaison is ensuring that the categories we're asking for in those inventory reports align and give us the information we need on JCPC to make those decisions. And so that's something that I'm working on a memo that you'll see that I'm going to send to finance once we've wrapped it up. So I think Jeremiah and Stephanie are doing a great job. And I, I think there's some additional things we can continue to do on our inventories to give us that a little bit more info than we've gotten in the past to make those decisions. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. Lynn?
I would actually be fine if we go ahead and deal with the last question and then come back.
And Kathy, did you have something you want to raise now? You know, you're muted, but I'm assuming that's.
I'm the same as Lynn, that I, I'm fine with the last question. I have some different questions. So let me see what a Lynn, Michelle asked.
Okay, what was the last question then?
Yeah, the last one is, are there specific challenges with respect to the disability access in our facilities?
I would say one of the challenges is, is probably prioritizing. And, and, and part of it is, is prioritizing not only the need for the commute, this, the, the individuals who are utilizing our, our buildings, but also it's, there's a financial piece to this. There, an example could be maybe an elevator door that's slightly narrower. Maybe, you know, it's supposed to be thirty-six inches and it's thirty-five. Though, that's something that you would have to look at and, and weigh it as a priority going. Is this, is, is this the best use of the money or is there others? And I, I just use that as, as one example. I, I'm, there's signage that's, that's cited. There's transitions that are, that are cited. So it's, I think one of the challenges is, is just prioritizing that. So I'm always trying to look for what is our, our, what is the greatest need and sort of what is the, the biggest bang for the buck? We, we want to, we want to have the funding that, that we have set aside go as far as possible. And, and really that, that's, I would say that's a challenge.
Okay, thank you. Lynn, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to apologize in advance if this is a little long-winded for me. We have recently had a couple of situations where abandoned buildings, if you will, buildings that we are not using to have people in them are, have come up. You know, one, for example, came from the Conservation Commission. Another one is under the purview of the Conservation Commission. That's the, another one is the South Amherst School. Okay, so as we, as a town, continue to, I'm sorry to say this, have people dump abandoned property on us, leaving us with the maintenance challenge. I think it is important that we have a policy about whether or not we're willing to accept some of these buildings. Because then people get mad at us for not using scarce town dollars to maintain them. And then somebody says, oh, I want to use that building. And now we go out and we look at that building and we say, well, it's going to cost XYZ amount to use that building. And then, you know, one of my colleagues pipes up and says, well, why didn't we maintain that building to begin with? So this is a longer range issue. You know, we recently, for example, voted a couple of years ago on East Street School. We actually gave it forward to the Housing Authority or the Housing Trust, and they're now making use of it by having it rehabbed at some level and added to. But the acceptance of buildings by the town is leading to us having a bunch of really badly in need of repair buildings on our books. And I want to figure out how we deal with that, whether or not we should accept those. Maybe we don't have the option. And if we do have the option, what should we do? And what should be our attitude towards the ongoing maintenance of buildings that other people have basically said we can no longer use these to inhabit people with the people. So little energized over the issue. Thank you.
Alicia is in the attendees.
Good. Pardon?
Alicia is in the attendees.
Thanks on bringing her in.
Alicia, back.
Lynn, I just want to to that, and I, and I know that I've been working with, closely with Dave and Dave and Rob and Paul on, on this. And now I'd have to say that, you know, for, for my piece of it, for the facilities pieces, is looking at some of the major systems, major utility systems and trying to maintain those as well, as well as I can. Because like most things, if they're, if they're left to sit, then it's much, much harder to sort of spark the life back into it. So it's a lot easier to keep some of those major systems going and then mothballing the rest. So, so that there is not an, an ongoing expense. So it, that's, that's really might have, has been my approach. But I, but I agree, there is, there is a, a bigger conversation, a broader conversation that, that should, should happen.
Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Andy. So I think Lynn, you identified an important comment, which was, these are buildings that were determined by the school committee that they are no longer needed for educational use. Then they go back to the town as ownership. It's not like they're giving it to it. It just, it reverts to the town for our ownership. Typically, buildings are, move away from them because people have deferred maintenance previously or that there is no need for them or because the expense, it's so expensive to bring them back up to code or whatever would need, need to be done to them. The same happened with the Hitchcock Center, which is on conservation land. It was our land that was used by the Hitchcock Center when they built their new headquarters. They said, we don't need that building anymore. We prioritize our capital, our, our very, you know, we're very frugal with our capital funds and we put those into buildings that we are using. We don't put the money into abandoned buildings, basically, until there's a need. We look for creative reuse of buildings like we did with the East Street School. And we're happy that that's being reused as a, for affordable housing. But then when we go to look at these buildings and Hickory is another one, it's a building that we're, we purchased. But we know that it has, it's, has its own weaknesses and the, you know, building commissioner has already gone through it along with the fire inspectors. You know, there are some, they become liabilities. And so I think that that's something that we are aware of. But when we get a building that we can use actively reuse, like the North Amherst School, that's actively being reused for a daycare center and for, and for archival storage for personnel records and things like that.
Lynn, do you have any follow-up before going?
I'll have more later.
Okay, Kathy?
I would, I, I just want to underscore, I agree with Lynn. I think we need a policy. And Paul, I, I don't disagree with anything that you just said. You know, we, we, it's easy, it's easier to accept and then four or five years later, figure out what we're going to do with it. You know, I was struck by the old Hitchcock Center that we're paying for the demolition of it, as an example. I guess we knew that was coming. So I have completely unrelated questions. On the, the health center that's in the Bangs Center, do they pay us rent?
Yes.
And does that show up? I, I see there's rental contracts. So somewhere in the budget, there's.
It's in the, it's in that rent line item in the, in the revenue section of the budget. It's, they're one of our, the, one of our renters.
Okay. You know, and it just, you know, Jeremiah, you said we're transforming Bangs from a community center to social service. I think it's partly during COVID, there were some steps and pre-COVID, we brought in the health center and that was pre the council. But are we, is there a plan when we lose the community space to say Jones is going to be our community space? Jones Library, which will have a community room. If we lose the community room in Bangs, would we have to pay rent to Jones if, and you may not know the answer. I know Jones is not on your list. So that's a second question related to the loss of one kind of use and where we see the second. And then my only other one is on, this is a picky one, but on utilities, you listed a lot of buildings that are in the utility. Is the North, Little North Amherst Library also in that list? It's just, it's missing from the list.
The library, the library pays those utilities. Now that may be changing in the future.
Okay.
But that's why they, that's why the maintenance and things like that have never been part of our capital reports.
Okay, okay, fine. Because I know we're, one of the things with the gift is that, that it's an upgrade of those HVAC system that should lower utility. So we wouldn't, we won't see the, we won't see that one way or the other in our budget.
Not right now, but again, that may be changed in the future where you might see it going forward at a certain point.
Okay, that, that's my question. And I just want to underscore, I think what Anna and others said. Jeremy, Maya came to us with an amazing list at JCPC where some, that addressed some of Michelle's where it's five to ten years of a plan on when are we doing which HVAC system, when are we doing which thing? So you, you can see on climate action and, and upgrades what's on the list or what isn't on the list. So it's probably a good thing to somehow flag when we write this report, just cross-reference it to a page, because it was extremely thoughtful on this notion of there is a larger maintenance list as well as, well as a climate action list with a, a really good and I, I just thought you've done an amazing job, Jeremiah. So thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you. Paul and Dave both have hands up, so I don't know which few between the two of you to respond to some of these.
Go with Dave first, I think.
Okay, Dave?
Thanks, Andy. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to build on what Paul said. You know, listening to this conversation and others like it that have happened over the last couple of months. I think part of it might be really more a communication gap between staff and, and committees and boards about some of these buildings. You know, we, we talk about them often. I work with Rob, Jeremiah, Chris Brestrop in the planning department and of course, Paul. And so, so I think we need to do a better job at communicating kind of what some of the vision might be for these properties and, and maybe that's part of the, the disconnect here. You know, these decisions to, to mothball, if you will, some of these buildings were, you know, have been very deliberate. East Street School, South Amherst Campus, South Amherst School, as I like to call it, not campus. As Paul said, we've, we've made deliberate decisions not to invest in those buildings or at least parts of those buildings because they are so expensive to maintain. And, and we don't think some of them have a long-term future. But the land that they sit on is very valuable and, and Paul referenced the East Street School property. If we hadn't maintained or, or invested minimally in the East Street School property or had divested of it, the Wayfinders Project for seventy new units of housing never would have happened. So, so there is a plan. I think we need to do a little bit better job communicating to the council and, and to various boards and committees. South Amherst Campus is a great example. Excuse me, South Amherst School is a great example. We think part of that building could be salvaged. It's very historic, but the south end of the building probably doesn't need to be. But the land that it sits on could be something very creative for the town. It could be another housing project in the future. So I just wanted to put that out there, that there are plans, if you will. And we need to do a better job at communicating to you all what those might be and, and get feedback and input from, from various boards and committees and, and the council. So thanks.
Is there, while you're here, is there a quick explanation of the history of the Hitchcock Center building and which sits on conservation land is to who built the building originally? Did it revert, was it built by the town?
Yeah, sure. Very quick. Sure, Andy, the quick, quick skinny on the Hitchcock Center building. So Large Hill, the conservation area at Large Hill, which is associated, you know, adjacent to the Common School is maybe the oldest piece of the first or second piece of conservation land the town ever purchased. We collaborated with the Common School to purchase the land. The Common School was looking for a place to, to live and be. And the town collaborated at that time, this was fifty-odd years ago, with an organization called the Long Plain Nature Center, which eventually morphed into the Hitchcock Center for the Environment. So the town bought the land that the Hitchcock Center sits on. That was a, a barn, essentially a carriage house for the house that the Common School is in. Common School has since expanded their, their buildings and their, their footprint. And the Hitchcock Center lived there, operated out of there for fifty-odd years, as Paul said, before they built their new building down at Hampshire College. So we've owned it for fifty years. It was, there were two additions to it, one in the eighties and then one in the nineties. But again, this is a very old barn building, poorly insulated. If any of you ever took, had programs at the Hitchcock Center or went there, it's a lovely old building, but it is not a building that we ever intended to invest in. It's an old barn. And when you walk in there, there's no insulation. The HVC, HVAC system is extremely old. The, the, the basement fills up with water. It's on an old septic system. All of these things that we in facilities and, and planning know. And that's why we, we came to the conclusion some years ago that when, when Hitchcock was going to move out, that that building was. that when, when Hitchcock was going to move out, that that building was not a good investment for the town. It does sit on conservation land, so it is highly restricted what can happen with the building or the land. So the movement is toward removing that, removing that structure, repurposing some of the old timbers, et cetera. And, and, and that land would revert to simply being part of the conservation area that it is part of and has been for 50-odd years. So hope that helps.
Okay, no, that does, thank you. Paul?
Thanks, I'm glad, Dave, that was one of my suggestions, was to get the history of the Hitchcock Center. Two things, one is, I want to second Kathy's, that we're really fortunate to have Jeremiah on our team now. He's been spectacular at sort of analyzing every building. And, you know, the previous facilities report was a pretty quick snapshot of what was there. He's doing an intense deep dive on every building, so we really know what we're dealing with. And I really appreciate, and it's, you say 12 buildings in a year, because he's got a million other jobs on his plate. So getting this in and having a target of that, I think is really a good plan. The other thing I want to mention is the Bangs Community Center. The, the second floor, which used to hire, it was, used to hold offices for the Center for New Americans and for Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Those leases were termed, and then that's why we have that space available for the Crest Program. These are offices that are now being transferred into offices for town purposes. So that was not, you know, this is not sort of program space that we used previously. The one space that was taken out of circulation was the pole room, which you heard people talk about at, sometimes with the seniors, center will say that's a difficult room to utilize for dances and stuff, because there are poles in the room. But that's now been dedicated to our Civil War tablets, which has become sort of a real magnet for people to visit. So losing that room has been significant. And I think the other frustration with the Bang Center is that it's been used as a community center. So there is, you know, one of the things you'll hear from the seniors, center folks, is that there isn't dedicated space for seniors, as opposed to space that they can reserve. And then that's a major difference in how they're able to operate. And then the last thing I want to mention is, in many of these situations, we're very opportunistic in terms of, you know, having the East Street School build, you know, putting that together with the space, the land on Belcher Town Road. Let us build, get a big enough project that enticed some developers to come in. Either one of them by themselves wasn't attractive enough or big enough to attract a good developer. Together, they made sense. So sometimes we hold on to these buildings and, you know, always are looking for future uses of them until something becomes economically viable.
Thank you. Bernie?
Two observations. One, another term for deferred maintenance is broken. So we need to really, and I'm glad Jeremiah, I'm glad you're watching that, because that's always a problem. The other thing is, we should not be afraid to bring the bulldozer. I think we got lucky with East Street School. I think we may have had other prospects had that building not existed in that space. I'm glad people were able to reuse it. But when, when I walked by the, the, the South Amherst School, because I live down here, I'm looking at it, and I'm wondering, why are we saving it? Because we could be using that for something that's even more immediate, more necessary, like housing. And I'm glad to know that we're willing to, to take down old structures and not simply as a sort of knee-jerk reaction, try to save. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Alicia?
Thank you. I'm wondering if there is, I've heard mentioned before, a property disposition committee that looks into these kinds of things, and whether or not they have a process in which like we will be able to pretty much like stay on top of these things and not be determining them after the building's already abandoned, per se, and just sitting there, and that we have like a forward-thinking plan ahead of time, is what I would think that that committee would be doing. Because while I, I do agree with Bernie in that there are some properties that we probably shouldn't be keeping in terms of our finances, there are probably also some properties that may be more financially responsible for us to invest in, rather than having the bill for a completely, like the demolition and a new building. And if there are a committee or peoples that keep track of those things.
Uh, good.
Thank you, Alicia, yes. There is a committee. It's not in a formal form, but, but it includes myself and Rob and the planning staff and Jeremiah. But I, I do think, going back to my earlier comments about communication, I think bringing that group together, this, we, we created some structure around this, I believe, just probably in the year or so before the council, before the change in government. So as the select board was, was nearing its, its end, they adopted, I believe, a policy, a surplus property policy, which included a, a group of, of staff looking at these buildings and reporting out on them. So I think, I think my earlier comments are, are kind of stand that we should do a better job of communicating to, to committees and boards, as well as the council, on some of the analysis of these buildings, and then our recommendations for what to, to use them for. So whether it's Hitchcock Center or East Street or South Amherst School. Yes, we will, we will do that in the coming year.
I mean, since I was on that select board, yes, we did pass that surplus building policy, and I might look for it and at least get it out to the finance committee, so that Lynn can decide whether to go to the full council. But it was adopted by the select board when I was on the select board. Anything else on facilities, Jeremiah, this is, or did you have, you've really covered the police station. There was nothing else you wanted to say about the police station?
I, I think that's it, just that, that we are looking at the police station and focusing on replacing those, that big system over there, the chiller. That's just the priority. And we'll continue to watch the utilities and hopefully continue to watch them go down.
Everybody thinks that it's a new building, but it's actually getting some age now. So is there anything else on facilities? I'll go on last round to see if any hands go up, and if not, then I'll turn it back to Sean to move us to the next step. Oh, Lynn?
Uh, first of all, again, Jeremiah, thank you. I think we know more about our facilities today than we've ever known. And we know more about particularly plans going forward that support sustainability. And Michelle, thank you for your questions. I think they were excellent, right on. I just need to be brought up to date. Did we replace the roof on the police station?
No, there's a, there's a project to, and then I think it's next year on the capital plan of the year after, to request funds for the roof.
Okay, and does the cost for that project also then include mounting solar on that roof?
Jeremiah can weigh in more on this. I think it remains to be seen. We're doing that solar assessment right now with Stephanie, where they're looking at municipal facilities and determining which ones are good candidates for solar. I've heard some, you know, different opinions on whether the police station's actually a good site for solar, so. But that assessment should be done by the end of June, where we'll have a good, a better sense. Jeremiah, you may have more information on that.
Not, not really any more than that, but we do have funding set aside for the engineering study that would also support that. So if we, it, it is, it is absolutely something that we are considering. But, but I, I felt that moving or sort of trading the place of the chiller and the roof was, wasn't important. The more immediate need is the chiller, and then I see the roof as a secondary to, to that, to that project.
Thank you. Jeremiah, thank you very much, really appreciate it, and appreciate all of the work that you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Thanks, so Jennifer Brown from the Health Department is going to go next.
Okay, Jennifer, I.
You're muted, Jennifer.
Thank you so much. Good to be here, I'm Jennifer Brown. I'm the Health Director and still the Public Health Nurse. I just want to give a brief overview of what the Health Department does, and then I'm going to highlight three important things. The function of the Health Department is to promote health and well-being of the Amherst community, and we do that through five major service areas. The first is assurance, to make sure that people have access to healthcare. This is something that was really important during COVID, something we did well, I'm very proud of, that we were able to link residents to receive the appropriate services and supplies that they needed. Second thing is infectious disease control. Obviously, we have COVID, and we'll talk more about that. But there's other things that go on in, in town. We've definitely had less infectious disease, there's been less transmission. But we still have rabies, and we have a good working relationship with the Amherst Police Department with that. And we have foodborne illnesses, and we thank Rob Moore and his team for inspections of restaurants and, and contact tracing for that. We provide health promotion, different services and educational pieces to residents. For example, ticks are, are being identified as a real issue, and we sure see that with a number of Lyme disease cases that we have. Health policy continues, and thank you, Board of Health, we have five members there. We look at our existing regulations, make amendments to them, and continue as new things are added. For example, tobacco is something we continue to, to work on. And then emergency preparedness. So that's something that we've always had good community partners with to help us with. So for example, the HPHPC, that's the Hampshire Public Health Preparedness, our EMS system, Tim Nelson, the Fire Department. We really have been prepared, public health, to expand and contract if there was an emergency, and that's what we did during COVID. We really had great teams working to make sure that we could do what we needed to do during this ongoing pandemic. I want to move into three initiatives. I'm just highlighting these, there are definitely other ones. One thing I think we'd like to continue to see the Amherst Health Department do is continue our COVID vaccination clinics. When we started a year ago, we were the game in town, you know, along with our partners, UMass and other health departments. But we provided 17,000 vaccinations. Now it's very different. For example, we can call the Bay State bus, and they'll come up to the schools and provide vaccine. But we really have an emphasis and a duty to eliminate health disparities. So that's something that we take very seriously. How are we going to help vulnerable populations? And that's where the Health Department will come in with our vaccinations. I like to continue our rapid antigen tests. We don't have the community PCR. I love rapid antigens and continue, hope to continue to get them from the state. You know, as we are moving to a model of people becoming more in charge of risk management, those rapid antigens are important. Then the other thing I want to highlight is to hire and train a public health nurse and create a strong workforce in the Health Department. So here we are, we have an offer out to a great public health nurse, and I'm checking my email, I'm hoping that we're going to get a yes soon. But we really need to look at what we have for our department. If you look at our page 174, you can see what we have in existing employees. So we have the Health Director, who's 1.0 FTEs, the, the nurse who we don't have, and then we have a program assistant who is through ARPA funding right now, and a contact tracer through ARPA funding. So that's something that, you know, I always want to make sure and make a plug for, the public health nurse is .8 FTEs. Love to see that increased at some point to a full-time position. I think it's a really important time right now in public health to make sure that we have a well-trained workforce and that we have ample employees to provide the services, like I said, expanding and contracting. That's what I have. I don't know if you want me to continue on, or if you have some questions.
Well, thank you. Sean, were there any questions came from Michelle or others that you've received in advance?
No, this, this isn't general government anymore. We're in the Community Services section, and there were no questions sent in for this department.
Thank you, Lynn.
Jen, first of all, thank you for everything you are doing. And I want to make sure people remember that during COVID, you had over 200 volunteers from the community and our staff that were helping you. And I just really appreciated that, your appreciation event that took place to thank those many volunteers. I hope they continue to be available to you. If you had a full-time nurse, would you find a different pool of recruits? And is that, is that, is that differentiation an important issue? Not just for level of service, but for recruitment?
So the, the way I'm going to answer this, I hope I can answer your question, is a full-time nurse is going to be able to do more outreach. So pop-up clinics go to the mobile, you know, food market. So, and to the schools, for example, really going to be able to expand our services there to our vulnerable population. Still very much need our, oh, our COVID ambassadors, that's something I didn't mention. We rely on them as well for registration during the clinics. And our vaccinator volunteers and other volunteers are just, just so important, so valuable to us. They show up promptly with a smile, they're skilled, provide really good service. So that's something we hope to continue. I don't know if that answered your question.
And Lynn, just to add to that, so we are using ARPA funds to make this a full-time position. The public health nurse, a full-time position through the end of FY24. So if the candidate wants full-time, not all candidates want full-time, but if the candidate did want full-time, there are funds to keep, make it full-time for the next two years.
Thank you for that information, Sean, thanks.
Um, yeah, I just noticed that the, the number of childhood vaccines and children immunized has been declining over the years since FY17. And I know some of that was obviously related to COVID, but it looks like it, it may be a broader decline than that. I'm wondering if there's some issue with communication? Is it anti-vaccine kind of stuff, or what's going on there?
So the childhood immunization, that was a program that we had here in the Health Department. We had a little, or a small immunization clinic that we would work directly with ARPS, with the schools, and we would take folks that have arrived in Amherst, had children they wanted to get into school, and they had to comply with the immunization, the vaccine requirements. We could take them in within a day, get them vaccinated, get them into school. So I love that program. I tell people that it was one part vaccine and nine parts getting them oriented to the, the town. I love that type of communication and interaction. So we get the, the parents and, hey, this is where you can sign up for health insurance. Bring them down to the Misanti Health Center. Hey, Center for New Americans, let's get you hooked in with that. So that's a program we don't have now. It's something that I've been speaking to the school about, and they feel it's something we'd like to bring back, so. Like to see that happen, but not sure the status of that.
See, I'm looking to see if there are any other hands, I don't see any at the moment. So I'm not sure if there's anything else. So I'm not sure if there's anything else looking around yet to see if there's any final questions or comments. Jen, thank you very much. That was extremely informative and extremely helpful. And I know that Health Department has been through a difficult period with transitions and with trying to get us through a real health crisis like we've never dealt with before. We really appreciate all the departmentists. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and I'll just echo really what Lynn was talking about. It's just, we have such support. And I just appreciate everyone from DPH, just on down. It's just been great teamwork and collaboration.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, so I was going to look at Haley and ask her if she has any time constraints, because I I guess Rob has a time constraint, so I was going to move inspections next, but only if Haley's okay with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Andy, I also want to note that we no longer have a quorum of the council in the room. I'll leave the meeting open in case that changes, but we really might need to adjourn the council.
Okay, well, I'll leave it to you to let me know what you decide to do in the meantime.
So I guess, so we'll turn it over. Lynn, are you, do you want to adjourn first, or are you going to wait?
I'm going to wait. It's at least seeming to have some connectivity problems, and that's where the difference is, I think.
Okay. So Rob, who's our building commissioners, is going to talk about the inspections department next.
Okay, Rob, thank you for coming back. I'm sorry that things got messed up, but appreciate you being here. Let's just start.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Andy, Sean, Haley, for letting me go first. Appreciate it. Good morning. So just a little bit about inspection services and our very talented, dedicated 10 full-time employees and two part-time inspectors. We are, you know, grown into quite an interesting department. You know, our core services of building electrical plumbing and gas permitting programs and inspections is where this department started about 10 years ago when I came to work for Amherst, but we do a lot more now. We handle all the licensing and support for the Board of License Commissioners. We manage a rental registration program. Now, seven or eight years since its adoption. We oversee the environmental health programs, anything related to septic well, food service, common Vic, camp licensing, all fall under the health programs. We're really heavily involved with facilities and assisting Jeremiah when we can with capital projects. And we coordinate weights and measures with the City of North Hampton's staff that actually conducts the inspections of our devices through the town. So we are in the midst of a very busy time. There's more large commercial projects under construction at one time than we've seen in a really long time. You might be familiar with them, the Newman Center, One You Drive South, the Amherst College Lyceum, Southeast Commons, the East Gables, and 11 East Pleasant Street is just about to start construction in the next couple of weeks. 26 Spring Street. So all these are in various stages of construction. And as a reminder, we do all the electrical permitting and inspections for the university. We do not do building inspections. We do not do plumbing inspections there, but we do all the electrical work. And as you know, there's several very large projects going on there. We are trying to catch up on a few things, so we're still recovering from some of the delays that occurred during COVID, particularly with our certificate of inspection program. That is our periodic inspection program of certain buildings, schools, educational buildings, assembly spaces, religious buildings. As you can imagine, for one reason or another, we weren't entering those buildings for a period of time. Some of them weren't in operation at all anyway. So we're still catching up on those, and those inspections occur, some of them occur annually, some of them are on a two-year cycle. So that's a little bit of a backup for us at the moment. We are working with the CRC to, who is very dedicated to a review and possible rewrite of the rental registration regulations and doing what we can to assist with that effort. Let's see, we have some really good news about enhancement to the department. Over the past year, we transitioned to a new permitting and inspection management program. This was, you know, long awaited and very much needed and has been great so far, and thank not only my staff, but IT staff that was very helpful in selecting the product and building it and getting it up and running. This has allowed us to go to online permitting for the first time. There's a nice way of communicating with the applicants now through this program that we've never been able to do before. Literally, an applicant can apply from their phone, you know, on the job site and respond to questions or ask their own questions of us. And, you know, so you can imagine with that use of technology, coordination, efficiency has improved greatly as, you know, most of the users and permit applicants have really appreciated that new program. So that's about all I have right now, and be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, there were questions in the packet from last week. So if anybody wants to see the questions that Bob submitted with the written responses, they're in the packet. And I just wanted to quickly echo what Rob said about the new software they're using. That's one of the real success stories. A lot of times, software vendors sell you a bill of goods, and it doesn't quite work out the way you wanted it to, but I think we're getting every dollar out of that software that we invested, you know, plus some. And just for the committee's benefit, I don't want this to go to Rob's head, but Rob's department brings in a lot of money for the town. I was, you know, person for person in terms of the number of people in the department, especially in the last few years with all the building projects that are going on. You know, they've been working really hard to get our revenues where they need to be, so.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the what Sean said. I think the electronic permitting system is probably going to save the town a lot of money and save the department a lot of headache, and I think that's a very wise investment. And I thank Rob and the IT department for doing that. I also just wanted to say that, you know, my own personal experience is that Rob is very responsive to complaints about buildings from neighbors. I didn't complain, but one of my neighbors complained a year or so ago, and the response was very rapid. So I did want to commend Rob and his staff for being very responsive as well.
Yeah, thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, I'd like Bob to highlight any questions and answers that he thinks the committee might be most interested in. I have to admit, I didn't go back and find that packet.
I could share it, Andy, if you want. I have it on my screen. If you want me to share it real quickly.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I won't read them all, but I'll leave it on the screen if anybody has any follow-up questions.
Yeah, the first question was just a clarification of, there was a bit of a mismatch of a couple of charts. And I, the second one referred to the permitting system, which I, we've already, we've already talked about. And the third was really just more of a, you know, kind of what's going on. I mean, we had a decline in permits for a while, and now obviously things have taken, picked up. So I just wanted to kind of get an understanding of the flow of work from fiscal year to fiscal year.
Then I have some follow-up questions. I just didn't want to be repetitive. So when we take on something like the Newman Center or something on the Amherst campus, on the Amherst College campus, they're paying the same fees that, I assume they're paying the same fees that somebody who is developing a property that's on the tax rolls in the downtown or someplace else. And so that's my first question, is that assumption correct? And then the second assumption is, shouldn't we be charging them more since they don't pay taxes on that building? And taxes are also what support this service.
Yes, the first question is, that's correct. The fee schedule is set without any differentiation between ownership or location. So it's type of building. And the fees are set by either square footage for the cost of the alteration, if it's an existing building. I have not seen personally, and maybe Sean or others have an opinion on this, I've never seen a fee schedule that applied differently to either nonprofits or tax-exempt institutions. In fact, if there are fees other than building permit fees, usually they're less for those types of uses. So I haven't seen any building construction fees that would be higher, and honestly, never considered that. So maybe others have an opinion on that.
I imagine that the nonprofit would, the argument would be used, but then this is something that should be brought into our negotiations of our agreements with those higher-ed institutions.
It's a good point. Other questions from the committee this point? Because I think that there's a change ahead that I don't think that we really have enough that we can form it now. It may not be a 23 issued, maybe more 24 issued. But that is, I know that there's a group of counselors who are working hard on trying to revisit the rental registration program and that may have budget implications, both needing to address on the revenue side as well as expense side. But I assume that you're working with, along with the counselors who are addressing that issue to try and make sure that it goes in an orderly fashion.
Yeah, yeah, the CRC has a very aggressive complete schedule for the rest of the year, working through a new potential regulation. And you also know that recently the council adopted a new fee schedule for the current program that does produce new revenue. So there's opportunities to either take an incremental step over the next year with enhancing the program or waiting for the counselors to finish up their work and decide what a new program could look like. And, you know, we're excited and anxious for either in both situations. And, you know, attending the CRC meetings and doing what we can to support that effort.
So I think I'm going to leave it, and then with one observation, as Paul has something to add to it, and that is that if there are changes that need to be made to the 23 budget in cycle, that we have a process to do that if it's not necessary. And that's something that has to be just monitored, and we will deal with it in course. And Jennifer?
Yeah, I guess, just echoing Bob, and I know Michelle will, you know, concur with me that we do. Rob and his staff have been working very closely with the CRC as we're looking to revise the rental permitting bylaw. We really appreciated that. And John Thompson attended a large neighborhood meeting on Fearing Street last night, and he really has the trust and appreciation of the residents. So we really appreciate Rob's staff. I just wanted to add that. Thank you. Rob and his staff.
Thank you. So anything else? Looking for more, is there any other questions? Don't see any hints raised at this point. So, Brad, again, thank you. Appreciate you working with us, and I know you, it sounds like you have something else you need to get on to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, are we at this point for Haley? Is that next?
Yep, we have two more. Haley for the senior center, and then after that, Steve for the veterans. So we'll start with Haley.
Okay.
All right, well, thanks for having me. You know, the Senior Center, we work really hard to make sure that older adults have a place in the community and that they're active, they're aging in place. So I can talk about some of the recent accomplishments in the last year. You know, we had a pretty seamless pivot to remote operations. We onboarded lots of Zoom programs. We're able to keep critical supportive services at the Senior Center, reducing social isolation and maintaining health of seniors. We did to-go meals, mask deliveries. We booked vaccine appointments for seniors. You know, lots of, again, online programming, utilizing both Zoom and Amherst Media. Through a grant, we were able to create a technology loan library, so individuals who didn't have a device could get one from the Senior Center and still participate in our programs and activities. We strengthened the diversity of the council on aging with four of the nine board members representing the BIPOC community. And we secured grant funding for caregiver bereavement and resilience groups. And, you know, continued the farmer's market token program, which gives $5,000 worth of tokens to seniors in Amherst to use at the farmer's market. Some of the key challenges on the long-range objectives for the Senior Center are to secure a sustainable stream of revenue to support a transportation program for activities of daily living and medical rides. We're looking to identify space for an exercise gym and coffee cafe, and both of those will strengthen resilience and reduce isolation in our older adults. We need to maintain fundraising capacity with the Friends of the Amherst Senior Center, increase the capacity to loan equipment like technology, you know, iPads, computers, and also durable medical equipment. And we're also looking to increase BIPOC leadership through recruitment outreach and services at the Senior Center. In the coming year, some of the objectives are going to be to obtain age-friendly and dementia-friendly statuses. And we're currently working with the PVPC and the Planning Department to accomplish that. We're going to perform a programming and services review so that we can understand how to better meet the needs of the BIPOC community. And we're going to establish, or we're going to look to establish, a dedicated space and fund exercise equipment. And then we'll also be providing input to the Planning Department on sidewalks and how to make them safer for our older adults. And of course, we're already in the process of reintegrating more in-person activities at the Bank Center and scaling up as we kind of step out of the move to remote participation. And that's what I had prepared to me. You know, I was working with Helen on getting this budget document together. And the only other thing I want to emphasize is that the staff, Mary Beth and Jen, who are no longer with us. And of course, Helen worked very hard to get vaccine appointments for seniors. You know, if anybody remembers what it was like to get those appointments in February, they would be posted at all hours of the day and night. And so the team had to work really hard to make sure that our older adults had appointments. And I can take any questions.
And Andy, there were no questions were sent in for the Senior Center ahead of time, so.
Okay, so is there any members in the committee of the council who have any questions? Bob?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could elaborate on the issues with transportation for seniors and whether that, you know, there's something that we need to be thinking about as the Finance Committee and Town Council.
Sure. So one of the things that we had been doing before COVID was offering medical rides, or assistance with medical rides. We have two minivans currently at the Senior Center. So that was a really well-used program. You know, a lot of folks have difficulty getting to and from their doctor's appointments. One of the needs that we do have is looking at something that's ADA compliant, and we're currently working with the PVTA to get one of their retired vans, so that we'd be able to offer non-ambulatory seniors a way to get to and from medical appointments. a way to get to and from medical appointments because the the minivans don't have a way to accommodate walkers or wheelchairs.
And just adding to that Haley, I think you're working with Doug Slaughter, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
So for everyone who knows Doug Slaughter, he knows the business manager for the regional schools, but he also um, I think he's on the the board or the president of the board for the PBTA. Um, and he kind of queued us in that, you know, they have a much more regular retirement schedule for their vans and that they sell them off. And that that might be a, you know, it might be a good um value to be found there. Um, and the one thing I'll add to that too is uh, we did allocate some ARPA funds for um transportation. And I think some of it depends on getting this van or um, but maybe you can uh elaborate a little bit Haley on how those funds will be used.
Uh, so the ARPA funds will be used to pay for drivers. So when we get the van, you know, we'll of course need somebody who can drive it and on that'll help us, you know, step away from having volunteers while we do utilize volunteers in a number of ways at the senior center. Um, for rides, you want a little bit more consistency and so having the ARPA funds to pay someone will will give us that.
Yeah, I would, Sean, I sort of, but Haley just said uh, pique my interest because I think that we're doing a lot of things right now with ARPA funds to support operations, which is really valued. But um, gets into the question of what's the long-term plan?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I think some of the things like this, they're not meant to be permanent. They're meant to be responses to the pandemic um and support people as they come out of the pandemic and get them back out there. And then if the town does decide it does want to make a permanent, we have time to consider that and see if there's funds in the future. But um, pretty much all the things that we've described, except for the firefighters, none of them are meant to be permanent.
On the other hand, we could build a real reliance of our senior community on services that they would want and expect to continue. So it's not.
Yeah, I again, this is these, this is a new. You're right, we'll have to monitor as we go forward, you know, there we've had ways of doing this in the past without those funds. But um, again, we're trying to put a a boost into it now as we come out of the pandemic to get people back out using the programs.
Bernie?
Yeah, um, somewhere between a half to a quarter to a half of the nursing home admissions. Right, because people aren't having, aren't able to manage the medications. Um, so I'm wondering what um our our senior services might be doing to work with elderly folks like me uh and to help manage those medications and and interface with the with the doctors to prevent nursing home admissions. And if there's any other uh, uh, in any other efforts in that in that regard, I mean, it's horribly expensive to have and painful to have something go into a nursing home. Um, it's much cheaper to keep them in in town. So I'm wondering what uh, what what's going on in that regard.
Sure. Um, and that's, you know, that's a really great point because many seniors would actually prefer to age in place and they they don't want to go to facilities like nursing homes. Um, so one of the things that we're doing, you know, is again, scaling up programs and activities. And certainly we do have a focus on making sure seniors have educational workshops that they can attend. And you know, thank you for bringing that up because that's an excellent thing that I, you know, I'm happy to reach out to doctors' offices or work with the health department or some of the nursing homes in the area. And we can bring in um instructors who can assist with that. Um, we can certainly look at caregiver type grants um that may be able to provide um, you know, families with some support for helping elders manage their medications.
Well, what are, one of the things um that we were able to accomplish, one of the towns that we're doing is to have our our public health nurse have regular conversations with um seniors and then uh interface with that with their permission with their doctors to help manage medications. That's an active case management strategy. Are are we doing anything like that?
Not currently, um, but it has been fantastic to work with the health department. You know, they've, they've been really great neighbors and we're very fortunate to have them. Um, so certainly that's something I can talk to Jennifer about and see, you know, what we might be able to do to better serve the seniors.
So, thank you.
Lynn?
Um, couple of questions. Um, first of all, I, let me, this is more a statement. Um, the sur- Amherst Survival Center learned the same thing about drivers. It's better to have consistent drivers than volunteer drivers. Um, and so I think that's a good move. However, I do hope we can figure out in future budgets uh beyond ARPA, how to continue a service like that. My question really is, are you collaborating with Amherst neighbors, which is really focusing on seniors? And trying to increase, if you will, the volunteer nature? And then I have another question, but why don't we stop with that one?
Okay, uh, yes, I've met with Linda Terry a number of times, um, you know, since I started here. And I think it's, you know, again, they're a really pivotal organization. Uh, they started from grassroots and they've become um a really important lifeline in the community. They're able to assist seniors who currently need transportation and they offer opportunities for people to get together with social programs. Um, so there's more collaboration to come. They did uh co-sponsor a workshop on hearing loss at the senior center. We had invited the audiologists at UMass to talk about what is hearing loss, how to adapt and navigate in different types of hearing aids. Um, so that's just one program that we've collaborated on right now and there's certainly more to come.
And then the other thing is I I applaud the senior center on trying to do as much as you could through Zoom. Um, and you know, other electronic means, remote remains uh during COVID. I actually encourage that you continue at least some of that in a mixed mode um because of the isolation um that seniors feel. And maybe they don't have the time or the inclination to physically come and join you. Or maybe they're afraid of ongoing can uh COVID. So um, that's just an observation and a question about your plans to kind of continue to provide both virtual and in person.
Uh, great question. So yes, we do still offer Zoom programs. We have several Zoom exercise classes. We have a cosmology group that meets once a week that's on Zoom. Um, you know, I, in talking with the community, there are folks who miss coming onsite and getting together with their friends. You know, at the open house, people talked about, I haven't seen this person in years and how wonderful it was to catch up with them. But not everyone feels that way and I, you know, I want to be sensitive to those needs as well. So whenever we can offer, you know, a hybrid option or doing a special Zoom program, we're, you know, we'll certainly do that.
Thank you and thanks for everything you're doing.
Yeah, Kathy, um, I know you have a time constraint because of an MSBA meeting, so I was gonna.
No, actually I went and came back and you might see I'm I'm so, I've been so quiet, you didn't know I was gone, but I'm back. I'm 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 it would you, Michelle can go up first. She had her hand up.
Michelle.
I noticed Kathy. Uh, yeah, I just, um Haley, I want to really thank you for your leadership. Um, I feel like the seniors are often, you know, sort of unseen and I just really appreciate you being a voice and leadership in that uh department. And I have a question about CREST and seniors and how, um, if you see any possibilities for CREST to be supportive or helpful to the seniors in our community.
Okay, good question. Um, and before I say anything, um, I think it really takes a village. You know, I I can do what I do because I have a great staff, I have great volunteers, I have great support from the town. Um, so that really, without any of that, I couldn't do what I do. Um, and CREST plays a part of that. Um, so coming up in July and August, we're actually going to have two programs with CREST, a meet and greet and then um a logo contest. Cause they're, they're looking for a new logo and we're going to have seniors vote on what that is. So uh, we we're already collaborating and I see CREST as really being another way to perform. You know, in just one sense, um, like wellness checks, you know, I might be able to say to a CREST responder, you know, hey, I haven't seen this person. And they're usually here every week for this program, you know, can you go and follow up with them? Or, you know, and in another example might be, somebody is experiencing dementia and they're, they're not quite themselves. And they're, you know, sometimes we'll have cases where the person thinks they can still drive and they can't. And the family member has to kind of tell them that and that doesn't always go over very well. A CREST responder might be able to mediate that situation and help diffuse it and um, you know, and keep the person at their house and not make it so that they need to be removed to another location.
Congratulations.
Can I just jump in on that for a second, Andy? So um, yeah, just credit to Haley who reached out to Earl when he first started and she and Earl have created, become regular companions and meet regularly, usually for lunch. Um, and um, but really formed a really strong team um at the at the bank center. So that's a really good relationship building, being built by Haley and Earl.
The role of the bank center. Uh, Kathy?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, you know, I could also just uh send this by email to Haley. But the what Bernie, what Bernie brought up about medications, there've been a few, um, I very innovative healthcare programs that use public health nurses or aides. But whoever was in the person's home with their permission, took an iPad and took pictures of all the medications in the cabinet. Because one of the things that happens is people don't throw out their old meds. And so not only is there confusion, but it took a picture with their permission to share it with the doctor. And um, the uh, in New York, the day when they, this was more connected with the primary care physicians. They were asking the doctors to guess how many meds the person was on and they were never right. Um, literally never right and it was always on, they thought fewer. So trying to think of this multiple who's in the home um and the um opportunities for someone who's trusted, I think is is really important. Um, and it's clearly not everybody, but it's, it's, you can kind of get a sense. In the rural South, this was huge. People were bringing in shoe box, shoeboxes with medications um to take a look at them. So it's, it just, I want to underscore that because it it leads to dementia and like mental issues that end up being a hospital or a nursing home issue.
Absolutely. Um, you know, so the the police department does a drug take back day uh every um, every April and October. And in Hampshire County, we had a ton, a literal ton of medications dropped off at the various police departments. So tho- those are, you know, like you're saying, it's very important to clean out those cabinets.
Lynn?
You, we no longer have a quorum of the council, so I'm going to adjourn the council portion of this meeting, not the whole meeting, just the council portion.
Okay, Matt?
Thanks, Andy. Actually, not a question, just a quick comment. Just want to thank Haley for all the work that you do with um the seniors and uh, and especially the flexibility that you've had and creativity that you've had um through the pandemic. We, I was just looking, the cultural council did have uh, we funded a the hip hop dance for seniors, which I know was over Zoom and kind of a mixed format thing. And I, and I just think um, you know, being creative and and collaborative and and finding ways to reach folks uh who who may not want to gather in person right now um is is super important. So just appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess so. Are there any exceptional challenges that um you're having to think about as you try and move back to a more traditional meals on wheels program?
Uh, challenges with programming in general or food specific?
Food improvement also.
Um, I think that, you know, the challenge is really just knowing what tomorrow is going to bring. You know, sometimes you're, you know, you make a plan and you think I'm going to do this program and then you, you find out, oh, cases are climbing and it, you know, wouldn't be a good idea to do it this particular way. Um, the listening sessions for the age and dementia friendly project are a great example. We wanted to do some of those in person and now we're kind of thinking we might do more virtual just because of the trends in COVID cases. So I I would say, you know, that's a challenge, you know, I'm thinking ahead, the holidays are coming up and how are we gonna get seniors together, how are we going to socialize in safe ways when there's a reasonable expectation that, you know, could cases will go up at that time. You know, typically we see a lot of the flu anyway um during the winter. So does that, does that answer your question, Andy?
Yeah, no, I was just thinking about it because uh I had friends who had been volunteers in the old program. And uh, what they always said was is that it was a program that not only got meals to people, but also got contact isolated.
Oh, the the UMass Meals on Wheels. Yeah, that was, um, so unfortunately that was suspended during COVID. But I have um reached out to the executive director of the auxiliary services for UMass and I'm hopeful that we can um, you know, relaunch that program at some point this year. Cause like you're saying, it meals on wheels is really important because sometimes that's the only contact a person is going to have all day. That individual is, you know, homebound, they're not able to get out and just having that volunteer go and talk to them for five minutes can be, can light up their whole day. Um, and not only that, but it provides meals. And my understanding of the UMass program was that it was an entree and a lunch. So people got two meals through that program at a very reasonable rate. Um, so certainly food is a big passion area of mine and I, you know, like I said, I'm going to try to relaunch that program with the support of UMass.
Good, thank you. Anything else on senior uh services?
Well, you know, just to keep your eye out, we have, like I said, a lot of activities, a lot of programs coming up, collaborations with um, you know, with APD, with CREST and the recreation department, you know, we we really want to get out there and get involved in the community and just help our older adults. There's a lot of older adults, you know, like I've said before, fifty two hundred people are over the age of sixty in town. So we want to make sure that they they know that they're welcome and they have a place.
Okay, um, anything else? Uh, I'm looking to see if there are any hints that go up because I think the only other thing that I would say is that during the hearing, we heard several comments uh and uh, the regarding the need for space in the senior center and uh, the programming that goes with it and uh to think, be thinking about the whole need for um, a new look, new location or new space plan. And uh, just want to assure you and everybody that it was a hearing, but we heard.
Yeah, I I think um, there's been a lot of support for in the community for this. And I'm I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing what the next steps are, you know, of working with the town manager's office and the finance department. Um, you know, we'll certainly do our, you know, our work together on the the joint capital plan. And you know, um, this is my first go around for any of these cycles. So I I'm really happy to have the guidance and uh and support of town hall for that. You know, cause like you said, there are some challenges that we're experiencing, but um, the best way forward is it's coming together as a community and as a town and and getting a solid plan together.
No, thank you. So if there's something else, I guess, uh, Sean, we're uh, not ready for uh Steve Connor.
Yep, yes, uh, so the last department um to go is Steve Connor for the veterans.
Hi, Steve.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I just made sure my, I was a little late getting on because my Zoom is working sometimes and not others. But today it's working, so uh, I'm not a great tech person, so. Um, so um, it's been a challenging year. And uh, I foresee the coming year also being challenges. And and the reason I say challenging is because uh very much the issues that Haley is speaking about are happening in my world because so many of my veterans are aging. Um, if you look at our numbers, it's, it's very deceiving. Um, we run a program of benefits under chapter one fifteen law that for indigent veterans, um, senior veterans who are low income. Those numbers are down, they're down statewide because of COVID, we believe. Uh, some of it's though also the aging of uh large majorities of of veterans. And now we have Vietnam veterans going into that group. Um, but the need of veterans in the community have gone way up. So my senior veterans, um, their needs have gone up immensely. And I've had a heck of a winter and spring uh with some of um, some of the veterans in Amherst um because of their needs. And as I do that, uh, it's coordinating services with my office with who else, whoever else can help and that's many times the VA, but not always. And so um, it's staying on top of things. And some of the other, a lot of the cases that I'll have, won't be people that I'm giving them benefits under the state program. Because income, they're doing fine. They may be a hundred percent service-connected veterans, but the hundred percent service-connected veteran doesn't get money from me. But the hundred percent service connected veteran doesn't get money from me, but they need a whole lot of services from me. And whether it's they they need home modifications done, and that's a whole process and and it's paperwork and bureaucracy that they don't understand. You know, there is some tax issues that we help with, but that doesn't seem to be a big deal either. The other thing that's going on is the people that through the VASH program, and for those that have never heard of it, it's called the VA Supportive Housing. It's a program to end veterans homelessness. And it's been around for about fourteen years, thirteen, fourteen years. And it's been very successful. It's taken formerly homeless veterans out of shelters and out of those GPD beds and put them into permanent housing. Well, there's hundreds and hundreds of placements in our area. And I've helped place many of those people. And many do live in Amherst. What has happened is is after a while, once they seem to be stable, they are dropped from case management. The VA says they're doing fine. We can now concentrate on more people and they get new vouchers and these other people are left to be stable. Well, we discovered this year that there's a problem with that system in the sense that as these veterans that were formerly homeless age, there's challenges and they don't have a case manager. I know about them because they may be on my benefits. They're still low income. That's why they have the subsidy. It's a section eight subsidy. I had a veteran that I was working with, trying to get him a service dog. I got that. And then I didn't hear from for a couple of weeks, and I thought that was kind of weird. And I got a call from Clue Dickinson Hospital that the veteran had had a stroke. And that he was there. And I'm like, oh, okay. Well, that's really great that the hospital told me. I think the hospital was trying to tell the VA hospital that information. Because what ended up happening is he ended up in a hospital, then he went to rehab in Ludlow. He was out of his apartment for five to six weeks and nobody knew it. Except certain people and nobody connected the dots. The veteran then was brought home, released from rehab and not even to his house, but to his girlfriend's house. And I get a call four days later that that's happened. And I'm like, oh, okay. Well, all right. And services. The person who called me said, well, yeah, I'm the one who goes in and does occupational therapy. I just went there. I think somebody has to go work with him because he hasn't eaten in four days and he doesn't have his insulin. And I'm like, what? His girlfriend couldn't get it because she's in a wheelchair and his apartment isn't accessible. He couldn't get it because he was still confused and could barely walk. And they released him and it was crazy. I went and found old medicines, found all kinds of stuff, but he did go four days without that. I ended up having a meeting with the VA in in Leeds about this very thing. Since that happened, they have created a new position. They've hired on a new social worker who's only there now to check on all the VASH people that have been released from case management that might need support again. But so it's 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 this whole crazy system of meeting the needs of my veterans. And now they talk about potentially closing the VA up here, which now has freaked out a whole lot of my people, district wide.
Steve, can you explain what the impact would be if the hospital was closed on the region? I mean, aside from obviously the hospital being closed, but what would happen to all the the veterans that are being serviced by that hospital?
It it's what what they're, what would happen is is all the veterans that are relying, especially in the rural communities, are relying on that hospital to be there to meet the need. They're talking about closing it and building a bigger facility into Springfield. Now, take just the gentleman that I was just mentioning, he's formerly homeless, he doesn't have a vehicle. So if he has to go to an appointment at the VA, currently, he can get on one of the buses and it goes all the way up to the VA. If they move it to Springfield, he either has to take a Peter Pan bus and then a smaller bus to get to wherever they're going to build this place. Or he can take the PBTA and it'll take him three and a half hours each way just to get to an appointment. So that's not going to work. I met with Congressman McGovern about this and we're really fighting it. We came up with a plan of action. He's had a listening session. But yeah, it it's it's going to be a really hard hit for my senior veterans and my disabled veterans. So we're fighting it. It's nine to ten years into the future. One of the things that the when they made these recommendations to this air commission, what they didn't, what they had used as data was that a hundred and twenty five million dollars in repairs and updates need to happen up there. And that was a report that they'd done in two thousand thirteen. Well, what they didn't say in this finding is that they've already spent a hundred million. I don't know if anybody here ever goes up to the VA, but it's been under construction for years. All the underground work has been done. All but two buildings have been redone. They've just done in the biggest building. Half of it has been gutted and they're redoing it. And they're going to keep going for the next several years. So we're really trying to convince the administration and Congress that they can't close this hospital. As is, they're already reducing the amount of services they provide. So veterans are going to have to travel. But even more importantly, you know, if if they close it completely, my my veterans just aren't going to have access. And they're going to go more and more into the community. And I will say again, and I'm running, I'm working with a group called the Just Ask Campaign, medical facilities do not know how to work with veterans, especially disabled veterans. If they have PTSD or traumatic brain injury or other issues. And so we're trying to address that as well. So as they shrink the VA and throw my veterans into the community, the community is not ready for them and don't necessarily understand how to deal with their issues. And so it's it's a frustrating experience, but I guess we're fighting it and see what we can do.
So just adding to what Steve said, just for new people to the committee. So the VA section of the budget has sort of two primary expenses. It has the assessment we pay to the central Hampshire Veterans Service District, of which Stephen is the the lead and he has staff there. And they do all the engagement and outreach. And we're a member with several other communities. And then the benefits that Stephen administers and pays out to veterans is the other big chunk. And we get both of those figures we get from Steve each year. So Andy, I guess if you want to turn it over, there were no questions sent in ahead of time for the for the veterans group. So if there's any questions now?
Yeah. We can see if there are any hands that have those questions.
Oh, the one thing I did want to say while people are thinking about it, just we are continuing to get our seventy five percent reimbursement. And that's, we've not had any issues with that. So we are getting our state money back. But as we have lost some of that caseload, our application for disability with the VA system for some of our veterans has gone up and so has the money that comes in. So I've got a record that last year money that's coming from the VA to veterans or their spouses through DIC or through their pension program for aid and attendance if they need, you know, people coming into the homekeeping in there. We brought last year, it was two hundred and eleven thousand dollars per month that is coming into the VA into the town of Amherst for those veterans. So that's that number's risen since I started here. So so one level is going down, the other one's going up, but.
Kathy?
Thank you very much, Steve. I'm going to ask a question that we asked of Haley. We have a new program called CREST and one of among the many populations that we wanted it to be able to serve were people with post traumatic stress syndrome, you know, acute mental issues that aren't well dealt with. So I don't know to what extent you Haley and then eventually Earl have shared lists of the kinds of people we're talking about, you know, so some of the vets are probably homebound, you know, when we talked about homebound, but just, you're thinking that the 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 human being might fit in multiple categories. And that they're they're both this, that and another thing. And I know, you know, if you don't get veterans benefits that the VA hospitals are around, the Medicare program is not as robust as what VA does to wrap around, including drugs. But I just, so this is just to the extent some of this can be coordinated. So we have I think of it kind of as an at risk list list that someone's paying attention to. So whichever resource. So it's a comment rather than a have you done this? I mean, we the program's not even been running yet, so you wouldn't have been able to do it.
Right. So as I've been running around, because Memorial Day is coming up and I'm everywhere in the district and trying to do all these things. I did run into Town Hall and I saw Earl. I worked with Earl previously in our homeless program. So he and I had worked on it. And so I said, after Memorial Day, I would love to sit down and go through, you know, what's going on with my veterans. And of course, I also get some of the veterans going to Craig's place. And so and those are usually with significant mental health issues. So we are going to, I'm hoping to meet and I'd love to sit and meet with Haley as well because one of the things through the years is I've been working more and more with Helen on some of the same people. She refers them to me. I, you know, we we've coordinated pretty well. So yeah, if I can get to Memorial Day, I would love to have some more connections with people, but it's just exhausting right now.
Steve, would you be able to give us a little more of a sense of the profile of the vets in Amherst? Based on age, race, and they're vets of which wars?
So there are still, you know, one of the, one of the hard things is to get a handle on all the veterans because so like the VFW is closing. They had younger vets. But now that that building is closed and the post isn't very active, they're dispersing. And so it's hard to keep track of them. The older veterans at the American Legion aren't coming in as much. So trying to keep tabs on people. I went, it took us, I worked with the Legion, we had one gentleman who was one of their officers. He had some health issues. I worked with him in the last couple of years about it. And I was trying to find him housing and then we didn't hear from him for five weeks. The Legion kept trying to find him. I was trying to find him. He wasn't answering his phone. Well, it ended up, he moved back with his sister under the cape, but it took us weeks to figure that out. So just that that's the struggle I have with any community is keeping tabs on them because they don't have a central place anymore like they used to that they go to. But I kind of look at the veterans in Amherst, we have those that have basically went to war, came back, resided in Amherst and stay in Amherst. Those are the people who don't need my financial services so much, but need other supporting services like getting them into VA health, getting them disability pays. All of those kind of things and and helping them plan their funerals. I've got a few of those this year. And and so I I have that. And then I have those veterans and a bunch of them are Vietnam veterans that have been homeless for decades and now they're in. Everybody knows most of them are African American. They move into Amherst because they feel that that's a warm feeling for them because they they see community there in Amherst and in certain parts of Amherst where they're not going to see that in Williamsburg or, you know, other places. So that's a good population in Amherst. They need both my financial assistance, but as they're aging, they need a lot of connecting to services. And also as they get older, they keep forgetting things. So I've been work trying to get my paperwork for some of my veterans. It's taken me five months to get one guy's paperwork done so that we get the seventy five percent back on his money. Because he has a phone, I got him the assurance phone. They used to call him the Obama phones. Well, that was great. It's free, but he can't work it. I've been trying to teach him for five months how to work this phone. He's just never going to get it. He's eighty three years old. So I have to drive to go see him. He lives over at the village. And I have to always go and see him. So some of my veterans, I actually have to go in person to connect with. So it it there is an array like in every community, but I'm hoping and I think one of my objectives is talking about doing more outreach. I did start and it's on the town site. I have a new show about outreach and about conversations about veterans' benefits and services. And I'm trying to get it. I'm going to talk with the folks at Amherst Media to get it on the regular television, but it is on the website. And I'm going to be doing those monthly and talking about the different issues. But every time I talk about what we do and what we can provide. Because I know there's a need out there, but finding all those veterans or the surviving spouses of of veterans is even more important because they don't even know I exist and that I can help them. So hopefully that answered your question in a very roundabout way.
Yeah, I just, it it does. I mean, I I think what we need to remember is veterans go beyond Vietnam.
Oh, yeah.
They're not just old Vietnam vets anymore. And unfortunately, we continue to not necessarily honor people in our service. But more importantly, Steve, there'll be at least five counselors on Sunday, on Monday.
Yay. All right. That's great. That's great. And we actually, I think it's going to be a nice program because we have an old friend who just wrote. I haven't gotten through the whole thing, but he wrote a new book about a Amherst college student who left college to become an officer in the army to fight the Civil War. And he's going to talk a little bit about that book, Mr. Romer. And I think that's inspiring for Amherst that he he keeps bringing the the history of the Civil War and how the African American population in Amherst had a central role in all of it. And I I also want to commend the town. I love where the Civil War tablets are. And I have some people come over and say, I just wanted to go see the tablets. So that's a great thing that that's back up.
You're muted, Andy.
Sorry, there was noise in my background, so I shut it off for a minute. So any other questions on veteran services? If not, Steve, thank you. It's always good to see you. Look forward to Monday.
Very good. And I think it'll be a good day and no rain. So
Yeah.
So far, so good. Thank you, everyone, for listening.
You you've got this one fixed, it looks like. So thank you very much. I appreciate your being here. So where we are in the process, and I want to get to public comment too, because I know there are a couple of members in public here who may wish to make comment. We have three things that we want to accomplish now. One is the public comment, of course. The other is is the get back to whether there are any last overall budget questions that I know we have received some from one counselor who's not present today, but did send them in. And Sean is going to at least point us in the direction of what the point us in the direction of what the questions were and what he could provide today. So that, that's two. And the third is that we are setting up the process because Tuesday is going to be the committee meeting where we're going to make the decisions, going to review the budget. And what we wanted to do was identify issues that members of the committee want to discuss in more detail and that will require particular focus. And I said that any, if any, is supported by two people on the committee that we will schedule time for the discussion of that section of the budget. Just remembering we are focusing on the town manager's FY twenty three budget during this discussion. So that those are the items, those are the subject matters that we will be needing to consider. And then it is part of that, if there is a motion that is consistent with the charter and state laws to what the council, what might be recommended to the council for action on any particular section of the budget that would then flow from those discussions. So I was trying to identify today, any that we can, that might arise, though there will be an opportunity on Tuesday next week to do that again. So those are the three things. So I'll start with public comment. And if there's any members of the public who are present, who wish to be recognized, speak to the committee, should raise their hand. We asked that you limited the three minutes and, but we very much want to hear from you. And I noticed that Tony is Cunningham is been brought into the room because she did raise her hand. And Tony, unmute your mic and welcome.
Thank you, Tony Cunningham Owen Drive. I wanted to comment on the discussion earlier about surplus town property. It would be great if the property disposition advisory group were formalized and their meetings made public. On June thirteenth, the elementary school building committee will select the site for the new elementary school. Having followed the process closely from day one, I am convinced that Fort River is a far superior site for a school for almost six hundred, five to 10 year olds. This would leave Wildwood for other town uses. I would like to encourage the town, whether that's this body, JCPC, Jeremiah LaPlante, or Rupert Roy Clark, to prioritize the improvements needed to the school building that will remain and get those improvements into the 10 year capital plan with the most urgent needs starting in FY twenty four. Good planning will ensure there is no gap in occupancy between when the school moves out, hopefully in June, 2026, and when other groups can move in. Wildwood is absolutely habitable. If it wasn't, my nine and 11 year olds wouldn't be spending six hours there every day. As you know, many community needs have been identified as priorities for residents, including more space for a senior center, a cultural center, a youth empowerment center, space for the performing arts and education collaborative, et cetera. I hope that the comments made by members of this body about dumping abandoned property on you and seeing property as a liability were not referring to the remaining school building. As an eighty two thousand square foot town building with parking is an incredible asset that cannot be replicated. To purchase property and build any of these centers from scratch would cost many, many times more than the cost of the repairs needed to the school building. In the 10 year capital plan in the FY twenty budget, priority repairs to both Fort River and Wildwood were included. Once the site for the new school is selected on June thirteenth, the highest priority improvements to the remaining building need to be added back to the capital plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else, anybody else who wishes to be recognized? Thank you. I appreciate the public comment and Sean, you have received some questions from Andy Hanke.
Sure. So I will go through these Paul, feel free to jump in or Sonya, feel free to jump in if you want to add anything. So the first question was what hard decisions did you make in funding various departments in order to present us a general government budget within council guidelines? So from my perspective and others may have different perspective, I think it's that we weren't able to invest in areas that a lot of you have heard about throughout these meetings. We've heard about a number of departments that have been stretched during the pandemic or have taken on more responsibilities. That, you know, if we, you know, if we had no restriction on funds, we would probably look to add to those departments. Some of the ones you've heard about are facilities, facilities, obviously there, there's lots of needs there. Our IT department you heard from in terms of supporting meetings and all that goes along with that. We heard from our recreation department. And I think the last one we've also heard about again is Public Works and, you know, the, the issues they've had attracting people and retaining people. So so I think there's a number and there's, you know, every other department has needs as well. But I think those are some of the ones that we heard through these processes that if there was no limit to funds, you know, we would look to, look to do something more. Paul, Sonya, you want to add in? No? Good. Okay. What isn't funded? How much would it take to fund them? So just the things that I just described, I mean, depends what we did. But, you know, it'd be, we'd be looking at probably at least $300,000 more for just the government, the general government budget or the municipal budget, not the schools in order to, to do, you know, add positions and, and fund different things. And again, it, it all depend on what we did. And these questions are not all on one topic, so they may bounce around a little bit. It was an email of, of several questions. So the next question is senior services, library and recreation all have friends of groups. How much of the operating budget for each of these departments do the friends of groups provide? How did this reliance come about? Why are these departments forced to rely on fundraising, but other departments are not? So we don't have super satisfying responses for that one. You know, I've talked to Sonya. She's sort of the office historian for me in terms of how this, how things came about, you know, no real, you know, Sonya, unless you want to add anything, you know, there was nothing that stood out as noteworthy, how these things came about. They just happen. The, you know, one thing we stopped doing because it wasn't part of the manager's budget, but if people, like I'll give people a sense of it now in terms of how much funding is provided. These are not funds that the town receives. These are funds that belong to the friends of groups. So we don't have great, you know, we don't know exactly what they're buying. We don't know. I'm sure that the people who work in those departments have a better sense, but we don't have an accounting of that per se. But we did get some of that information in the past. So the senior center is probably the one that we had the most information on because it used to be part of the budget book. And so I think the friends of group in FY eighteen, just to give people a sense of magnitude, fundraised, I don't know if they spent this much, but they fundraised about $26,000. So I don't know about recreation. I don't think we've tracked that or have that information available. And I'm not, I think the library budget Sharon may report on that a little bit. So again, not great, not a great response to that in terms of how it came about. Why that's the case, you know, the only thing I can think of is these are all those three areas, library, recreation, senior services. They're all departments that provide programming and programming can be scaled up. It can be scaled down. It's one of those things that if, if there's a certain type of program people want, that may not be within the existing operating budget, they could fundraise for it. And over time, you know, things change and, and scale up that way. I think the departments that don't have friends of, friends of groups are the ones that sort of provide, you know, it's not a programming service to the public necessarily. The next question, so additional programs, departments, or department objectives include several additional programs, the senior services area, an exercise gym and more programming, the recreation department, a youth empowerment center. The fire department mentioned the community paramedic initiative and the communication center mentioned a new lead dispatch position. How are priorities for additional programs determined across departments? And how are these decisions the council should be making or advising the town manager on? So the one I'll pull out is the youth empowerment center. So that's such a large decision that that would be, you know, a community decision, a council decision, town manager decision. That would be a much broader conversation if that was, if we move forward with creating something like that. The other ones in terms of an exercise gym, the paramedic, community paramedic initiative, lead dispatch. If that's thing, if those are initiatives that can be added within operating budgets or incorporated within existing operating budgets, then that would fall under the town manager. If it's something, you know, we, each budget gets, the government budget gets some new funding each year. So if there are things that can't be handled within existing operating budgets, but maybe the process we have with departments is they're able to propose additions each year. So when we review their budgets, they send in an addition form, if they're going to propose any additions, all those get added together and prioritized by the town manager. And a lot of that prioritization is, you know, it's compared to what new funding we have available. So the first thing we have to do is from the new funding we have available, take off contractual steps and colas and things like that. And a lot of times that takes up a big portion of our new funding. So there's not a ton usually left over for, for new things. This year in particular, there was no money left over for new things because any money that was left over for new things, we put towards the crest program and DEI. So this year in particular, very, there was, there were no additions. But that's how those things would happen. If there were, it was a new program or a new initiative and new funding was needed, it would be requested and then it'd be prioritized. I'll stop there because I see Alicia has her hand up.
Alicia?
Yeah, thank you, Sean. I was just wondering if you could specify what leftover funds were applied to DEI and Crest that you're referring to?
So when you take our two and a half percent, I can try to get the exact number, but when you take our two and a half percent increase to the to the municipal budget, we first roll everybody up steps and colas. Anything that was left over within that two and a half percent increase was combined with the $300,000 that was added to the, the municipal operating budget to fund the, the 10 new positions within the operating budget. And I think it may be, I think it's in the, the introduction to the budget. So hold on, let me see if I can find that real quick. If I can't find it quickly, I'll email it back to the group after. Yeah, let me email it to the group after, but for some reason, the number 360,000 sticks out in my head is what we had to add to this year's budget for Crest. We know that we went $300,000 above the regular two and a half for Crest. So the, the balance would be the difference of the, the 60,000 or so that would have come out of the, the two and a half percent, which is our regular increase.
I think it was, I think it was three seventy one, five two oh, if I'm looking at the right thing.
Okay. But we can send, I'll, I'll send the exact numbers after.
Thank you.
So Bernie?
Yeah, I, I just thought I had announced the formation of a friends of the finance department group. So we can make sure that everybody in, in the finance department has ample supply of coffee and headache relief.
We've actually decided Bernie, the next year, we're going to sell the budget books. So be prepared. There's going to be a $10 fee for those and
Okay, as long as you're available through Amazon, we can get them. The question I, I do have though, and I, it, it, I'm sure it exists, and I just haven't found it or have ignored it. But it'd be very helpful to get an ARPA spending plan.
Yep.
So we know exactly where the ARPA money is going and where, you know, we, we'll be looking in the future to replace our money with taxation or some other, some other forms. Because I think your $300,000 figure, Sean, with all due respect is a little low. I think we've gotten a substantial, my guess, we've got a substantial boost from ARPA and that we're going to have to make some painful decisions going forward about, about this. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. It's, it's a, it's a huge amount of work and it's a real balancing act and lots of, lots of stuff has to, a lot of a lot of nights spent thinking about this, I'm sure. But I would appreciate an ARPA spending, spending plan and we'll, we'll say, thanks.
Yeah. So I'm just going to share my screen real quick. So Bernie, this is page two sixty nine of the, the budget document. So this gives the, the categories or the, the projects that ARPA funds have been allocated to. You can see it's a very wide, you know, pretty much every department, one way or another, it has some connection to some ARPA funding. Affordable housing, homeless homelessness were sort of the two big ones that Dave Z and his team are working on. The fire EMS staffing one, you can see there, many of these projects are over multiple years. So I don't want you to see the eight seventy five for fire EMS staff. I think that's one year. That's three or four years worth of funding. So the annual amount is lower. The sixth grade transition, most of that is for, for one time cost to support that transition to the middle school or one time cost to the town at least. Economic development, mental health. So again, we can, you know, at some point, I'm sure, actually, I'll just do another plug. Each of these, there's project descriptions that are beginning to go up. There's, I think there's over 10 of them now. They're up on the ARPA section of the webpage where you can dig into more of these in more detail and see the more specifics about what's, what's being funded and what the benchmarks are and things like that. So many of these are up there. There's a few that are still being developed. So they're not up there yet. But here, this is the plan again, and I'm sure in the future we'll, you know, there'll be more questions on this.
Yeah. Some, some of this is, some of this is one and done. Some of this is going to cause some degree of ongoing spend. Yeah. And that's the ongoing spending piece that I think we're going to have to focus on in future discussions.
Right. And actually, you know, and as you look through it too, you know, I'll just point out, try to know areas where we actually hope it creates more funding for the town. You know, it's, it's the, the projects are intended to generate economic development or development of, of, of housing, things, things that will actually bring in more money to the town.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. So let me keep, oh, Kathy has her hand up.
Yeah, I just want to build on what Bernie asked, because I know we had that page, but I think of it as some are one and done. Some, if we, that money's not there. We have a hole in an ongoing service, you know, something that we're supporting. And some is potentially creating a new demand on the operating budget. And I would just like it sorted out because we didn't, we, we had a discussion on that list. We didn't have a long discussion on that list, but as we think through it, I, we, when we first saw the glimpse of FY twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, the tightness of that. And when I start to remove those phones. So it's a different way of thinking about it, Sean. From a, this is a one time thing. That money goes away. That's fine. And I appreciate the economic stimulus. We don't, we might be spending money and getting more money because of that, but so I, I just would like to be able to think that way about it more. So I just wanted to build on Bernie's point, not to say that that list isn't a good starting point, but to be able to look forward. The other is on Mandy's list of possible things that departments have mentioned that, or others have mentioned that we might want to do. Several things came up in this budget cycle. One of the ones I found particularly intrigue, intriguing was the EMS fire discussion of what a staff trained as more as paramedics and what they could do with homebound is really extension of the healthcare system. I have no idea what that might look like, but it's a waste of money, the way we're doing it now. The, the care system, maybe not town money to drive someone over to Gully Dickinson, drive back and then drive them back again. You know, if, if we could be doing something to stabilize them. So I, I found and the comment was that unless they had to be staffed differently to be thinking about providing a different kind of service. And I wasn't sure how much was billable. You know, so you wouldn't want to add that without knowing you can bill for it. So I think some of this is not a, a quick discussion. It's, it's, it's a more exploration. And I have no idea whether there are municipal governments out there that are doing anything like this, that if we weren't thinking for next year or for two years from now, but it goes with everything we just heard with the VA and, and seniors. So I was really struck by the waste, particularly around, around mental health. Repeat admissions where our ambulance is driving back and forth and only getting partially paid for that amount of time. So it's, it's a comment to flag the area that Mandy picked up.
Yeah, this is actually kind of looking to next year and to ARPA. And that is that as we look at the number of buildings, And that is that as we look at the number of buildings that are being built and are going to come online during this year, therefore bringing in more taxes. And he would be important to begin even next year to take positions that are being funded by ARPA and start moving them on to the regular operating budget, like the police positions, et cetera. And the reason I'm saying this is right now, we have added sixteen positions in this budget. That is a lot. And as we go into future years, trying to figure out how we're going to even be able to maintain those sixteen positions is important. Now, I also have a, you know, slightly secret plan of what I would like to see us do with that additional upper money. And one of those ideas is to help use it toward our school to the extent that we can, so that we can help reduce the tax bill coming to people. But I I just want to start thinking about how we look at ARPA money now and how we look at ARPA money down the road and how we look how to wean the town of ARPA money. Because for operating, because it is a serious issue down the road. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, Lynn. I think if we see that revenues are doing better than you know, better than forecasted and we can have higher increases for operating budgets. We will certainly look to do that. Try to bring those things into the operating budget sooner. And if we free up our money, that's great. I think that applies to both the town and the schools, right? Because we've heard about the schools and, you know, S R and what's going on there as well. So so I think that's definitely on our radar of if we can, if, you know, stated comes in better or other things coming better, we'll look to do that quicker.
Yeah, Sean, so for the ARPA funding, it I, from what I could tell the the government and the treasury had certain categories for allocation. And I'm just wondering with respect to localities, how closely our categories have to match up to sort of those broader categories. And if I I assume that you've gone through that exercise, I'm just, I'm curious about.
Yeah, yeah, you'll see that again on the the project snapshots on the webpage, what categories they coincide with. So smaller municipalities have a lot of flexibility with how they're used, because one of the categories of ARPA is what they call revenue replacement. And they've given every community a $10 million allowance for revenue replacement. And since our allocation is only $12 million, essentially $10 million of it, we can use for anything that governments are allowed to spend money on. That being said, the whole point of ARPA was economic stimulus and helping recover from the pandemic. And so, you know, when you look at our plan, that's really what we've tried to do with it. It's we've tried to, you've spent it on things that help stimulate the economy. Deal with some of the major issues that the pandemic showed us that we had, like mental health or public health. And tackle some of the longstanding issues that the town has identified. Like like housing and the homelessness allocation. So those are sort of the three buckets we've tried to tackle. And again, there's other things we could do, but you know, this list came out of listening to the community, working with department heads, working with stakeholders. You know, we worked with the council, you know, you shared this with the council and got input from the council back in early mid mid twenty twenty one or so. And then I think it was approved, not approved, but it was. We asked if there were objections in November and there were no objections.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing that we've learned over the past months has been the effect of inflation on our costs and our construction costs, which is where it comes back to the elementary school. And what extent we can use ARPA or have other plans to address those issues because some increases in costs, we hope are temporary, but some increases in costs may not be so temporary.
Yeah, I think one of the things we weigh is impact. So, you know, I hear Lynn's point about using to reduce the the school that exclusion, especially because it's higher than what we expect it to be. You know, we've looked at the numbers of, you know, every million you shave off the debt exclusion, what impact that has. Again, I know it might be symbolic and it and it and it's important for the town to do everything we can. But the impact is very small because it's over thirty years. You know, it's of a large number, it's a small piece of it. So it's something we'll certainly look at. And we do have about some something north of $2 million that hasn't been allocated yet that we'll be looking to allocate this fall. And I'm sure that will be one of part of the conversation.
Bernie.
Yeah, one of the challenges here has been that the the feds have pushed this money out the door because they want it used quickly. And everything's done on a post audit basis. And they're just slowly, as I'm seeing, they're like drips and drabs of audit standards are being and and are being released. So I appreciate, I wanted to raise that because I appreciate how people have to dance around this to make sure that we're not running afoul of a standard that doesn't quite exist yet.
Right. Now, that's especially true of the CARES Act, and that may be some of what you're seeing as well. The CARES Act, some of the audit, auditing standards are coming out now, you know, months after the the funds that's spent or once after the grant has ended. So, so I'll keep.
Way in on that, you know, Sean has been very careful to check in with the administrators. Every time say, is this an appropriate expenditure and has that in writing from folks for the most of the major expenditures? So I think we're in good shape. He's been very diligent about that.
So I'll keep going through the question. So the next question. It appears you've proposed a budget that does not use our entire property tax levy capacity. There was about 165,000 of excess capacity. What is the reason behind that? And how much would each additional sector get if we'd use the entire levy? So there's a couple pieces to that. What we've done is we kept, we've kept the excess levy the same as it was the prior year. Or approximately the same as it was the prior year. If we were to use all that now. Two things, one, it would, it would mean a larger than normal tax increase for this year. And one thing we thought, given inflation and everything else going on, going larger than typical is probably not the best idea this year. The second thing is that number isn't set until we do the recap. So that number is going to fluctuate a little bit. If we see a revenue that we don't think, you know, something between now and the recap is done, whether it be our new growth number or other local receipt numbers that may not be coming in the way we thought they were coming in, that number sort of the the offset and would plug that. And then the question about how, so if we were to allocate that to the general government, elementary schools only and the library, it'd be seventy five, eighty thousand dollars more for each of those budgets and about $6,000 more for the library. That being said, I'm not sure that's the way we would have do it if we were. We're using about $500,000 of reserves to support this year's budget. And and the capital plan, so I don't know if necessarily if if we were to exhaust all of that, if it would actually go straight to departments or if it would go to reduce our dependency on using reserves this year. The next question is is the 500 K budget from the stabilization, the planned use of reserves to boost capital spending and borrowing for the large projects? And yes, it is. So that is, if you look in the other financing sources section of the revenue, you'll see there's a use of reserves and that was, that's what that's for. Why are local receipts being budgeted for less than FY twenty one amounts, which was a hard COVID year? Should we be higher than FY twenty one? So if you look at FY twenty one closely, you'll, one thing I'll jump out to you, and this is actually the next question. And that's the fees line. You'll see there's about $237,000 with the fees and FY twenty one actuals, but zero for the budget. And that's because those fees are impact fees for short term rentals and for cannabis. And they're restricted in their use. They're not, they're not truly general fund revenues in the sense that we can use them to support the overall budget. Sony and I are looking at ways we may be able to set up a revolving fund or something separate to track those. Because it causes some issues. One, it causes this issue of comparing year to year where it's not going to be budgeted. Because it's not unrestricted in that way. So we're thinking, looking at maybe send up a revolving fund of some sort. The other issue it causes is each year those funds fall to free cash, they're still restricted. And so we, so we have to keep a running tally of our free cash or reserves that are from that source, so that when we do have a plan for how to spend those funds. You know, we know what the balance is and we make sure they're spent on the right thing, which is another argument for having a revolving fund. So when you actually look at our reserve balance, it's a little bit inflated because it has those funds in it that aren't really general reserves. The, a couple of other reasons why FY twenty one may appear or why FY twenty three, maybe a little over than FY twenty one is we had a really high supplemental tax and FY twenty one that goes year to year. There's some years where it's really high, some years where it's nothing or really, really low. And the pandemic impacted that a little bit. So so we don't assume really high supplemental taxes in the budget. And then cannabis tax, I think, is the other one that's down a little bit. We're projecting a little bit of a decrease for FY twenty three from FY twenty one. That's because we're experiencing that now, FY twenty two, we saw a big drop in our cannabis revenue. And that may bounce back with some of the new dispensaries coming on, but our our recent experience is that it dropped off. The second question against its related fees, this line is zero for FY twenty two and FY twenty three, which are the budget years. But it brought in over 200 K in the prior years, which are actuals. Do we budget this line? And again, we, so we don't currently budget that line because that's restricted in its use. And we're still developing a plan for how to use those impact fees. Again, they're restricted to only being used on the impacts of the dispensaries that pay them. Where one of the things we're trying to look into is like, how strict is that? And could they be used for broader, broader social activities that might be able to help some of the things the town has been talking about, whether it's crusts, mental health services, other types of things. So we're still trying to get it's get more information whether it could be used for that. Next question, UMass Strategic Partnership is listed at zero. When is this new strategic partnership going to be executed? Why aren't we receiving funds in accordance with the expired one? Has failing to execute a new one actually lost the town money because UMass isn't paying based on the old one? So we're currently having those conversations. The exact timing of when a new one will be executed is to be determined, but we are well into those discussions. And, you know, they'll, we'll have more information when there's something that we can report back. In terms of whether we're, whether we have lost money or or if we're receiving money based on the old one, it's sort of yes and no. So the town is actually getting more money than we used to under the old agreement. The town is, the two things that sort of swapped is that under the old agreement, the town used to get $120,000 of sort of general fund revenue. That has been replaced by $185,000 going directly to the schools. So the town general fund budgets or the, you know, the the money that we have to to allocate, that has gone down by 120,000. But in terms of the net money that comes to the town, it's actually gone up because that 185 now is going directly to the schools. And that's the, it's a new revenue for the school department, starting a couple of years ago. And then the ambulance funds, which is the other big piece of that, that continues to be paid based on the the prior strategic agreement. So overall, again, I would say it's a net increase, but the money that, you know, you see here in the budget in terms of the local receipt section, it's dropped. Finance, why are collection rates for motor vehicle, collect size, parking tickets and ambulance billing so low compared to property tax and water sewer collection rates? What can be done to increase those rates? So property tax and water sewer collection rates are, they're always going to be, you know, pretty strong because they're tied to the property and they're eventually paid when those properties turn over and our our collector's office does a good job working with residents that maybe need a plan or needs, you know, help getting, paying their bills. Motor vehicle excise and parking, those are also eventually paid. They may not be paid in the year that we, you know, issue them. But they do get marked with the registry of motor vehicles. And when the individual goes to renew their registration or to renew their license, they have to address any of those outstanding tickets or that are over, I don't know if it's six, I think it's six months old or something like that. So so those are eventually paid. It's just the timing, maybe a little bit of a lag. The ambulance ones, I think, are probably the ones that actually, you know, we're not collecting to some extent. And there's a couple of reasons for that. I think, you know, we have a very our population don't, they don't all stay here forever, right? They come and they go. And so it's, they're not always here. There's not as much, we don't have as much leverage with the ambulance bills as we do with the other ones where there's something we can, you know, we can attach it to that when you know, they go to renew or they go to sell their property, we collect it. We don't have that same ability with the ambulance billing. We did, we used to do ambulance ambulance billing in house, same issue, low collection rates. Several years ago, we decided to use a third party biller to see if that would help. Hasn't so much helped from what we can tell. And we do use a collection agency for bills that get over a certain, certain amount outstanding. Which helps collect some of those really old bills are a little more aggressive than the town or or the the third party biller. And, you know, one of the things we are going to look into more, just to see if we can parse it out from the numbers I talked a little bit about with Jen. And I need to talk about with Jeff Olmstead. And you heard about this during the fire EMS presentation is that some of it is just Medicare or mass health. They don't pay the full ambulance bill. And so I asked Jen, you know, is that part of the collection, the gap in our collection rates? Is it just that these billers weren't, aren't going to pay our full rate? And therefore, we're going to always, whenever, you know, we're billing those providers, we're never going to collect 100% of it because that's just not what they pay. And she thought that might be part of the issue. So we're going to see if we can parse that out because that's a little bit different than if somebody's just never paying the bill. If it's just, there's a fixed amount they're willing to pay. And and maybe have better information on that next time. And then the rest of the questions are about the regional school. And I've got some answers and some I've sent off and I might have to send it back to the committee. So the first question is, how much time salary expenses does the town spend to maintain regional school owned property? And so we don't have an exact number for this, but I think Guilford mentioned it is a significant portion of time by the tree and grounds department. During the spring, summer and fall to prepare fields. You know, they do some of the mowing, they do a lot of the the preparation for events. They do the seeding, things like that. So I'd say, you know, it is a significant portion of time and they also help manage the pool. I think I mentioned that last time they do the the chlorine management, they do the testing. And if it needs additional chemicals, they add those. And there and and so for the labor and that is associated with those activities, the region does not pay the town for that labor. They provide the supplies, if there's any supplies needed, if again, if it's grass seed or fertilizer or the or the chemicals for the pool, they will buy those. But they don't pay for the labor. What type of support from the public health department is given to the Amherst Regional Public Schools? Do we receive any funding from the region for these services? So Jen Brown did answer this one early this morning. So no services that are support at this time. And then therefore, no funding is going back and forth. She said during COVID, the contact tracer was more involved with them up to the end of the calendar year and that contact tracer was funded by either cares or or vaccine reimbursements. But they have no direct interactions now. And so I don't know, she didn't talk about prior to COVID, if there was, you know, a lot of exchange of services, but my recollection is there, there was not. And Lynn's got a question, Andy.
Yeah, I need to call the council back to order again because we have seven in the room. And I need to check to see if Dorothy Pam can hear us and we can hear her.
Yes, I can. I'm sorry. I was at another meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll keep almost done. What other expenses does a town incur in its own budget that would normally be funded in the regional schools operating or capital budget? And the examples given were paving, vehicle maintenance, certification, supplies for field repair, payroll for staff time, et cetera. So my understanding, again, talking to Guilford is that the region does pay for the materials for the paving, for paving or pothole filling. They, the region does handle its own vehicle maintenance. I know that and they handle their own certifications and I believe they pay for inspections. I think the DPW may do some of those inspections, but they pay the the inspection fee. The region pays for the supplies, again, for the field repair maintenance, but the the DPW provides the the labor. And Kathy has a question.
It's actually a comment on this last set of questions. I think it's pretty clear. One of the things Mandy's trying to do is create an accounting system that says we're giving services that are worth money so that when we're negotiating what the assessment method is. People have a tool to use. So I think it's less about this budget, this FY twenty three budget, and it's more looking forward. So I think, I mean, that's, that's where that set is going. And I think it's a really good idea, you know, whether you know, I had notes that Paul, we don't build back normally, but it's more to make the case that you're getting services from the town of Amherst, period. You know, and and they're of value to you. It's not just. So the other, the other point on some of the other questions, they were clearly a very close read on the revenue side. And when I used to actually teach public budgeting, one of the things I said is you always try to be conservative on the revenue side and on the expenditure side, because you don't want to be wrong. So you've got to build a margin. We can't come back later. And I think some of this. some of this is just prudent management of our budget. So I appreciate the questions. Finally, one more just general comment. Um, I think we need to be really careful with reserves and pulling anything out of reserves. Cause I'm extremely worried about the price tag that we're going to show to, on the elementary school budget that we need to go out for, uh, uh, debt exclusion. So protecting as much as we can, and Lynn has already spoken on ARPA money that is not yet allocated to the extent it fits the category, trying to bring down what we're going to have to ask for tax, for tax things. So I, I want to protect those reserves. I mean, that's why we've been building them up. But particularly with the school coming down the pike, I think it's even more critical. So to the extent we have savings, I want to offset the drawn reserves would be the other way of saying this. I think it's a good idea to be doing that, to, to be building up our ability, because it's only, we will be out in this, the way things are, we're hoping that we will reach an agreement on a site that MSBA will agree with us that things will go. And it's, we're going to be, we're talking about spring of twenty twenty three when we're going to have that number. So it's, it's not in the distant horizon, but in the very soon horizon. That's it.
Yeah. And so Kathy's exactly right. I, I'm not, the rest of the questions, um, I've sent off to the region. The one question that's just, uh, sort of counterbalances the previous questions is, in exchange, what expenses do the regional schools pay for that would normally be funded from the town's operating budget? My recollection is that's primarily use of space and the town using space for different events and activities, but I want the, Doug Slaughter and Rupert to verify and see if they can find more information on that. Cause, cause they do charge for some use of space, but I don't believe it is all use of space. So they'll, when I get responses to these other questions, I'll send it to the committee. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any similar questions of people from the committee or the council have about general budget issues? So, because we moved to the last item, otherwise. Cause I, I think, uh, in, said this before, said I don't really need to go into, again, but we really do need to get back to a revisit of the building plan for the major projects and, um, how that has changed and, um, get into the explanation to newly elected councillors who haven't had that thorough explanation of how that, um, whole analysis works and, um, how we came to the plan to begin with, uh, I think it's a good refresher course for current councils, for, for councillors who are carryover and an important one for, um, the ones who are serving for the first time this year, and we need to get those figures updated. So we need to get that on the horizon at, at the reasonable point when this, uh, that makes sense. What I wanted to just conclude with then is, uh, to take a few minutes to, um, sort of organize ourselves for the next steps as far as what issues that we need to anticipate for our next meeting. And, um, if there's an agreement on issues, we'll automatically place them on the list. Again, we can come back and add on the thirty first, but, um, if there are things that you know that you want to have discussed in more detail for either you, because you're considering making a motion regarding, um, changes to the budget within what is permissible under the charter and state law or because you would like to have a further explanation made to the council in our report and you think that the discussion is, the, the discussion is important for that, that reason. Do we try and identify them, um, soon? And the one that I was going to just start with, and I'll turn to Lynn is that, um, I think we have to address the elementary school budget question, um, that has been raised by the school committee, um, though it would take one other person to agree to have that placed on the agenda for the thirty first, uh, since I'm just one person. But I'll start with Lynn.
Andy, I fully agree that we have to discuss the elementary school. I would like to also, uh, there's two other, one other place where we've had a request with regard to the FY twenty three budget, and that is reparations. And so I think we need to place that on the list as well. Thank you.
Michelle.
This is more of a procedural question. Um, you had said that we need two people to support something being discussed. Andy, was that, is that in our rules somewhere or is that just a?
No, we just said that we would do that as a matter of course that, uh, you know, it, it's not in the rules, but it was just that, um, we wanted to try and have some sort of process to get forward. And if there weren't two people who thought it was worth spending the time on, that we would, uh, note that. I, by the way, I might as well ask right now, since Lynn has put, uh, has mentioned reparations, um, put you down for a second so that we can get past that.
Of course you can.
Okay. So that's, that's on the list then. Do you have others that, uh, other things that you've thought about for, to Kathy?
Well, I support you and Lynn on the, the school conversation. Absolutely. Um, but that's all I have for right now.
Okay, Kathy.
Um, yeah, this is, um, sort of thinking as I understand this, the short version of the report before the version that has all the sections in it is what I'm thinking is, I think we need to have a paragraph or two, and I wrote way too much for you on the discussion we had with, um, public safety. But we had a series of voices, uh, asking to reduce the police budget specifically. So I think we need to include a par. So if we are doing everything but the schools were, were saying yes to, I think we should do a paragraph or two on why we're endorsing what's been proposed to us. And I tried to pick up as much of a flavor of that conversation. Cause I thought it was a really good with Earl's voice, um, talking about moving a program in, developing a program. So I just think it would be good to just acknowledge that we had had that, but keep it short. So it's not so much sing, signaling out and just on reparations. I, I know Lynn, you wanted to put it on, but I, I think it's a more of a future issue, but, um, I'll look forward to the discussion.
Okay, as I agree with the public safety, by the way, so I'll make that a second, uh, just to get it on there because I do think that there was a, we, we do need to pay attention to the public hearing. And, um, it was one of the issues that was raised significantly during the public hearing. And, uh, therefore it has, I think it has to come forward. There was another issue that I think was raised during the public hearing that I was thinking about. But it really has to do more with the capital, um, improvement plan and future capital planning than it's senior center space. We do need to acknowledge that we had comments about that. But, um, I'm not sure that it's an operating budget question. This really is, uh, we need to focus on the operating budget. Michelle.
Just, I would like to respond to what Kathy just said about reparations. And just really clarify what the requests are from the African Heritage Reparation Assembly for this body. So there are two requests. The first is that the town council will agree to have free cash moved in to the reparations fund as they did last year in part, as part of this discussion. And then there's the discussion, the second request, which is for permanently earmarking cannabis tax revenue for the future FY twenty four and on. So I, I also want to remind folks that we were charged with identifying a, a, a funding stream. And our charge is completed in June, two thousand twenty three. So that's what we're trying to do. So the, the conversation that we're, that we'd like to have and that we'd like for the finance committee to have is in two parts, the first being moving free cash, the second being, uh, the cannabis tax revenue. Thank you.
I think that the, uh, complication in, uh, Sean or Paul can, um, or Sonja can add to this and explain it to the transfer of money, uh, to stabilization funds is not ever a part of the operating budget that's being proposed for the next year. Because it's really funded from the pri, the current year, it, um, what happens at the end of the accounting process for the present year. Since there's no, um, place in the budget that says, um, transfer any funds to, um, stabilization funds. It's not included in the budget and, um, since our responsibility is to say what we're recommending to the council that it can do and should do in relation to the budget, which is either to accept the budget or to propose a reduction, but except for the one piece, which is the elementary schools, if requested by the school committee, we can't add. It makes it hard to, um, say that that's really a FY twenty three budget issue. Sean, uh, do you think I stated that right or?
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'd want to hear from Michelle if she means the same as last year, meaning the same timing as last year, which again is when we do the, the free cash transfer, transfer, or if she means as part of this discussion, if she means now.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. So I recognize what you're saying, Andy, and I understand the way the process works and I'm not requesting, um, that Paul or Sean, or that any of us make a motion to change the budget, budget with respect to reparations. What I'm asking for is for this body to have the conversation now and make a recommendation. So the town council can, as they did last year, approve moving money in the fall into the reparation fund. Um, I don't want to push that conversation off. Um, if you feel like it's not part of sort of the box that we're working in right now, I'm okay with that. I just want a commitment from you and from the committee that will have that conversation along with the second request about the cannabis tax revenue. So that it can get back to the town council to vote on. So that, that's, that's the, I hope that makes sense and answers your question, Sean and, and Andy.
No, it does.
Sean, uh, last year we were doing something at this time of the year because the reaction that was taken at this time of the year doesn't have to be repeated, which was to create the fund.
Yeah, but we didn't fund, we didn't fund it until the fall.
But we didn't fund it until, also the recommendation that was made to the finance committee. And then through the finance, through the council last year came up in, in the fall after free cash was certified.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think my recommendation is to, as, as Michelle said, have it on an agenda. Um, there's going to be other things we need to meet about in June. I already know a few that are sort of outside the budget process, but we'll need to go to finance committee. Um, one is the centennial funding, um, that we alerted you to. So we're going to have meetings in June and I think having this be separate from the budget process, because it's not in the budget, but having it on those agendas, I think accomplishes everybody's, um, goals.
Sonja, before I get to Kathy, so I need you.
I just wanted to remind everybody that until the books are closed and that usually happens like August, September time, we won't even really have the final number for, um, what came in for, for, um, cannabis revenue taxes until then. So we normally don't have any conversations about any transfers from free cash until it's certified. And then we have all those numbers. So we'll know whether we have a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy five that's getting transferred. So just want to remind everybody, we won't have those numbers.
Plus, uh,
Or certification.
And you had reported to us at the time that you discussed the third quarter budget report for the current year. We have certain concerns about what is going to happen within the fourth quarter in the year end, uh, because of all of the inflation that we're now facing.
Right.
So Kathy.
Uh, I, I think I'm going to be echoing what's being said, but I just checked because I, I want to check my memory. We had this discussion after we put the budget to bed last time. We had it in June. It, it's on the June, it, because it got referred from the council on, with June fourth was on the finance committee's agenda. The AHRA proposal. So we were, we were first getting the budget done and then we were having this discussion. So I, I'm not saying not to have the discussion and not to schedule it, but we, it was separate because it actually, the referral came in and we, we had those two very long meetings. Cause we had a whole meeting around CREST too. So I was just looking at when it was on our agenda last time and we'd done the budget piece first, um, before we came and looked at what I, what I meant about future. It's because it's an allocation of uncertain amounts of money when we're sitting here talking about it. So it was in a slightly different time period, but very close to first doing the budget. Yep.
Okay, Lynn.
Yeah, I want to be very clear. My reason for requesting it is because it was requested of us. So in my mind, it fits into the same category, uh, as the other two items. They, they're outstanding questions. They were advanced to us. We can have the discussion. We can either make a decision or defer a decision. But we at least need to have the discussion. That's my only basis for bringing forward both, well, for bringing forward reparations. Thank you.
So I think that the other, the, the difference is getting narrower because it's not a question of discussing it. It's a question of whether to discuss it on May thirty first or, um, put it into a June meeting. But there's no disagreement that it should be on the agenda for discussion. So fair summary. So is there anything else that, um, you want to identify now for, uh, the thirty first? So let me leave it, as, as I said before, um, please give careful consideration to whether there are other sections of the budget that you feel need to be, um, talked about further either so that we can have an understanding of what it is that we want to say in our report. Or because you might want to consider, um, act, actual action and be prepared when we start the meeting on the thirty first to talk about that. If not, I think that we, um, certainly, um, anticipate that we will have discussion about what it is that we are going to recommend to the council on the elementary school issue that was raised by the school committee. And that we are going to talk about the public safety issues in general. In order to make sure that we as a committee are comfortable with the response and, um, Kathy actually has done some significant work on this already and, um, I think I will need to talk with her about, um, whether to just send that to, to the committee in advance or, um, Todd, but I'll leave that for a separate conversation. Lynn.
I have a, it's a process question. I have a, it's a process question. First of all, on the agenda. Even though we may list these three items, can we make sure we list another item that's broad enough that anything can be brought up under the discussion? And the second is. Are we going to be looking at the draft on the thirty first or how are we going to? The draft so it's prepared to go to the council. In, within the required time period.
Okay, it's a good question. I'm just repeat what I said before is the proposal is that a deal with this. This year, and that is to do a brief report to the council on. Our recommendation for the budget and I mean, it can be as simple as a page. We recommend approval of the budget as recommended by the town manager. Or that we were adding in any exceptions that arise from motions on the thirty first. And that that can be sent so that we meet the thirty day deadline and then. Indicate in that there will be a more complete record forthcoming and. I was not anticipating at this point scheduling a meeting that if there's a request to schedule a meeting. To talk about the draft, we can do that. Otherwise, I would. To the, the report draft and the board. Similar format to other kinds of reports we've been doing. Michelle?
My question is, is right along those same lines. So I remember you saying that. We would take our assignments and create some paragraphs or one paragraph for, and so what, what exactly would you like to see in that paragraph? I know you, I think you sent an example and when would you, is that part of the bigger report? What's the deadline on that?
That's part of the bigger report.
Okay.
And so. You know, it could be. Like later next week is fine for that, like Wednesday or Thursday. But I think that what we really want to do is. Avoid repeating anything that's in the budget itself. You might refer to it, but I don't think we need to repeat what's in the budget. Cause the budget's already been completely written. It's very extensive. But if there's information that we received during presentations. That was additional to what is already. In the budget book, that that's the key. So. If you posed questions and or answers to questions that. Provides additional information that that's the subject matter. In that way, we can. Keep the whole thing briefer all the way through. Trying to make sure that, and what I'm going to do is work on sort of. Key overarching issues and try and get that draft out fairly quickly so that. There's plenty of opportunity to respond to it. Anything else? Okay, so to get to the. The, I have to see if I can find it quickly, but. We already posted, excuse me, that posted. There is, yes, we did post the, we had to post the thirty first already because. Since Monday is a holiday, it made the posting time requirement this morning. So Athena's already posted the meeting for. Next Tuesday and the way that it reads. Since you may not have it is that we would start with the public comment. After convening the meeting and the reason for putting public comment at the beginning is that. If there are members of the public who want to comment on any budget sections. Either that we've identified or if not been identified, that we really should hear from the public before we. Get into the discussion rather than the after, under the circumstance. In this, the next item is. Sort of the general overall budget review questions discussion I did. That I have put into every agenda during this last period. And the, the reason is just so that we can continue to have general open discussion about the budget. And the third is FY twenty three. Budget review, budget recommendations to report process. So those are the items that are on the posted agenda. And it, it is already out there. So anything else? See. There's no hands up. I think that we have completed our business for today and we know the task is for. It's Tuesday and. Once we get past public comment, I think we'll go, we'll start with the school budget. So with that. Consider this meeting adjourned and thank you.